Call meeting to order tonight. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.23711A16, the school board needs to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters: personnel matters. May I have a motion to enter into the closed meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel matters? All in favor? On the opposed? Okay, we are going to go in closed session and we will be right back.
All in favor? I move. All opposed? Okay, we are gonna go in closed session and we'll be right back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now I read my note. Lynchburg City School Board certifies that in the closed meeting, which just concluded, nothing was discussed except matters specifically identified in the motion to convene into closed session meeting and lawfully permitted to be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion. And now can I have a motion to approve the certification of the closed meeting?
Move that we approve the certification of the closed meeting.
Second. Okay, and any discussion? Okay, and I think this one I have to call by roll call. Dr. Brennan?
Agreed.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
And Dr. Sinha?
Yes.
Okay. Good girl. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we will move to the election of Chairman of the School Board. In accordance with Section 22-1-76 of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary that the School Board recognize for the 2018-19 school year, reorganize for the 2018-19 school year, the process of reorganization begins with the election of a Chairman of the School Board for 2018-19. Nominations are now in order to elect the Chairman of the Lynchburg City School Board. Do I have any nominations?
Yes.
Dr. Zalik to nominate, this is Susan Morrison for Chairperson for Lynchburg City School Board. I second.
Any other nominations? Harry Nun, can I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and now I need a motion to approve Ms. Susan Morrison as Chairman of the Lynchburg City School Board.
I move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and with that, my reign is over and I will pass this gavel to Mrs. Morrison and the floor is yours. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And now we switch seats.
Oh, name ticked. Thank you. I'm looking forward to working with this board this year and doing great things with everyone involved with Lynchburg City Schools. The next order of business is the selection of the Vice Chair of the School Board for 2018-19. The floor is now open for nominations for the Vice Chair. Ms. Mason.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Dr. James Coleman for Vice Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
Second.
Do we have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? No? Do I have a motion to approve Dr. James Coleman as the Vice Chair of the School Board for 2018-19 school year?
I move that we approve selection of Dr. James Coleman as the Vice Chair for the School Board for the 2018-19 school year.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Look forward to working with you.
Madam Chair, I would like to say I am excited about working with you and the great things that shall come through your leadership.
Well, thank you.
I am excited as well. The next order of business is the appointment of the Clerk and Deputy Clerk for the 2018-19 School Board. In accordance with Section 22-1, 122B of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary that the School Board reorganize for the 2018-19 school year. The process of reorganization requires that the School Board appoint an agent and may appoint a deputy agent for term of one year. The Superintendent recommends the following appointments. The Agent for the School Board, Anthony Beckles, and the Deputy Agent for the School Board, Kim Lukanich. Any questions or comments?
You got to back up. You went one page ahead.
Oh, I did.
The Clerk.
Oh, I gotta appoint, we gotta appoint the Clerk first. How did I miss that?
Anthony wants to be the Clerk.
That was the plan. All right, I did. Ms. Spinner put me up to that. All right, let's go back to B1 and I'll keep count this time. In accordance with Section 22.176 of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary that the School Board reorganize for the 2018-19 school year. The process of reorganization begins with the election of a, I don't have that one. Maybe that's why I missed it.
Page five.
I got it. Requires that the School Board appoint a Clerk and may appoint a Deputy Clerk for one term, term of one year. The Superintendent recommends the following appointments. The Clerk of the School Board, R. Denise Spinner, the Deputy Clerk of the School Board, Barbara Saunders. Any discussion or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the Chairman recommendation for the appointment of Denise Spinner.
Ms. Carter has made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Mason has seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, B4. Appointment of the Agent and Deputy Agent. In accordance, is that right? I'm on the right one now? In accordance with Section 22.1-122B of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary that the School Board reorganize for the 2018-19 school year. The process of reorganization requires that the School Board appoint an agent and may appoint a deputy agent for terms of one year. The Superintendent recommends the following appointments. The Agent for the School Board, Anthony Beckles, and the Deputy Agent for the School Board, Kim Lukanich. Any questions or comments?
You got to back up. You went one page ahead.
Oh, I did.
The Clerk.
Oh, I gotta appoint, we gotta appoint the Clerk first. How did I miss that?
Anthony wants to be the Clerk.
That was the plan. All right, I did. Ms. Spinner put me up to that. All right, let's go back to B1 and I'll keep count this time. In accordance with Section 22.176 of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary that the School Board reorganize for the 2018-19 school year. The process of reorganization begins with the election of a, I don't have that one. Maybe that's why I missed it.
Page five.
I got it. Requires that the School Board appoint a Clerk and may appoint a Deputy Clerk for one term, term of one year. The Superintendent recommends the following appointments. The Clerk of the School Board, R. Denise Spinner, the Deputy Clerk of the School Board, Barbara Saunders. Any discussion or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the Chairman recommendation for the appointment of Denise Spinner.
Ms. Carter has made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Mason has seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, B4. Appointment of the Agent and Deputy Agent. In accordance, is that right? I'm on the right one now? In accordance with Section 22.1-122B of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary that the School Board reorganize for the 2018-19 school year. The process of reorganization requires that the School Board appoint an agent and may appoint a deputy agent for terms of one year. The Superintendent recommends the following appointments. Agent for the School Board, Anthony Beckles, Deputy Agent for the School Board, Kim Lukanich. Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve Mr. Beckles as the Agent for the Board and Ms. Lukanich as Deputy Agent for the School Board.
Thank you. Dr. Nellis, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Mason? We have a motion and a second that we approve Anthony Beckles and Kim Lukanich. Do I have a motion to approve Dr. James Coleman as the Vice Chair of School Board for 2018-19 school year?
I move that we approve selection of Dr. James Coleman as the Vice Chair for the School Board for the 2018-19 school year.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Madam Chair, I would like to say I am excited about working with you and the great things that shall come through your leadership.
Well, thank you.
I am excited as well. The next order of business is the appointment of the Clerk and Deputy Clerk for the 2018-19 School Board. In accordance with Section 22-1, 122B of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary that the School Board reorganize for the 2018-19 school year. The process of reorganization requires that the School Board appoint an agent and may appoint a deputy agent for term of one year. The Superintendent recommends the following appointments. The Agent for the School Board, Anthony Beckles, and the Deputy Agent for the School Board, Kim Leconich. Any questions or comments?
You got to back up. You went one page ahead.
Oh, I did.
The Clerk.
Oh, I got to appoint, we got to appoint the Clerk first. How did I miss that?
Anthony wants to be the Clerk.
That was the plan.
Exactly.
All right, I did. Ms. Spinner put me up to that. All right, let's go back to B1, and I'll keep count this time. In accordance with Section 22.176 of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary that the School Board reorganize for the 2018-19 school year. The process of reorganization begins with the election of a, I don't have that one. Maybe that's why I missed it.
Page five.
I got it. Requires that the School Board appoint a Clerk and may appoint a Deputy Clerk for one term, term of one year. The Superintendent recommends the following appointments. The Clerk of the School Board, R. Denise Spinner; the Deputy Clerk of the School Board, Barbara Saunders. Any discussion or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the Chairman recommendation for the appointment of Denise Spinner.
Ms. Carter has made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Mason has seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, B4. Appointment of the Agent and Deputy Agent. In accordance, is that right? I'm on the right one now? In accordance with Section 22.1-122B of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary that the School Board reorganize for the 2018-19 school year. The process of reorganization requires that the School Board appoint an agent and may appoint a deputy agent for terms of one year. The Superintendent recommends the following appointments. Agent for the School Board, Anthony Beckles; Deputy Agent for the School Board, Kim Leconich. Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve Mr. Beckles as the Agent for the Board and Ms. Leconich as Deputy Agent for the School Board.
Thank you. Dr. Nellis, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Mason? We have a motion and a second that we approve Anthony Beckles and Kim Leconich.
I think Denise.
I'm sorry.
You're doing fine.
I missed it.
Oh, no. Did we do the approval for Barbara Saunders as Deputy Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, do I, we have a motion and a second? All in favor? B5. The Appointment of the Designee of the Division Superintendent 2018-19 school year. In accordance with Section 22-1-76 of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary that the School Board reorganize for the 2018-19 school year. The process of reorganization requires that the School Board approve a Designee of the Division Superintendent to attend meetings of the School Board in the absence or inability to attend by the Superintendent. The Superintendent recommends Ben Copeland, Deputy Superintendent, as her Designee. Do we have any questions or comments?
Move to approve Mr. Copeland's Deputy as Superintendent's Designee.
We have, we have a motion to approve Mr. Copeland as the Division Designee and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is this where I ask for the, okay. Before we move further into the reorganization, I have a, we have a need to, have a motion to add a Personnel Report to the Consent Agenda that we will discuss later. Do, we all have that consent, that report? Do I have a motion to approve the addition?
Seven.
Ms. Mason? Ms. Carter, thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Thank you. All right. B6. Dates, Meeting Time, and Location for the School Board Meetings 2018-19. Annually, the School Board establishes the meeting dates, times, and location for the regular School Board Meetings. During the 2017-18 school year, the School Board conducted the meetings on the first Tuesday of each month, beginning at 5:30 PM in the Boardroom at the School Administration Building. With School Board approval, meetings for 2018-19 will follow the 2017-18 schedule, with the exception of July 24th, 2018; August 21st, 2018; November 7th, 2018; January 15th, 2019; and June 18th, 2019. The additional meetings in July and August and June are to assist with the approval of hiring new staff throughout the summer. Questions or comments?
Yeah, Dr. Coleman.
Sorry. Dr. Coleman.
Yes, Madam Chair, the dates are wonderful. I am aware that there may be at least one School Board member that July the 24th is going to be problematic. I'm available, but if the date needs to be moved to accommodate persons, I would have no problem with that. And I know that these are additional dates, and I certainly understand the reason why they are being added, and adding them up front now is giving us notification, but it may create a problem for at least one Board Member, and so I just wanted to bring that, bring that to your attention and to see what the Board felt about any possible adjusting or the Superintendent explaining what actually is going to happen at that meeting, et cetera, so forth.
That, excuse me. That would be the second meeting that we would have in July, a second one in August, and a second meeting in June. And the only business that we intend to conduct on that meeting is for personnel and hiring staff, and just to make sure that any new staff members that we want to bring on board don't have to wait several weeks in the summer where they may be solicited by other Boards who may want to hire them, and we can get them on staff as quickly as possible and get them to an orientation session and get them set up. So, the only business will be just personnel. We will not be conducting any other business unless an emergency situation arises.
So, Dr. Ziffern, I will be unavailable for that date also, the July 24th date.
Do we have to meet on Tuesday? Meet on Friday just one time, or Saturday? Do we need the personnel needs?
Well, we need five. We need a quorum, so.
And I under-
You know, we can change it. We can still change it if we needed to next week if it turned out we weren't-
We won't have a quorum.
And it was, it was a problem, so. Yeah, just Tuesdays, just sort of standard practice.
But if, with the understanding that if we, next week we needed to change it, then we could, as long as we could get five people here, because we already know of two that would be unavailable that day.
What I'd like to see is more notification for any additional dates, because we got other work lives, you know, and then we need to readjust the whole calendar, so what I'll request is give us a little bit of time to adjust other parts of the business.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? So do I have a motion to recommend that the School Board establish the dates, time, and location for the School Board Meetings for the 2018-19 school year as outlined in the summary description?
So moved.
Ms. Mason made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Carter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Item B7. The Election of School Board Representatives, Laurel School Board. Each school year, the School Board elects a School Board Member to represent the Lynchburg City Schools on the Laurel School Board. In addition, the School Board elects an alternate member to represent the School Division as necessary. Mrs. Sharon, Ms. Sharon Carter has expressed a willingness to serve on the Laurel, as the School Board Rep on the Laurel Bar, Board. I have not had anyone say that they would like to be an alternate. If there's anyone that would like to do it, I would be happy to entertain that notion as an alternate.
Well, I'll be an alternate for Laurel.
Mike? Thank you. Dr. Nellis? So we have Mrs. Sharon Carter serving as the Representative and Dr. Mike Nellis as the Alternate. Are any questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the two? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. B8. Election of School Board Representatives, Central Virginia Governor School for Science and Technology Governing Board. The School Board elects a School Board Member to represent the Lynchburg City Schools on the Central Virginia Governor School for Science and Technology Governing Board each year. In addition, the School Board elects an alternate to represent the School Division as necessary. I have had Dr. Nellis indicate a willingness to serve as the Representative and Dr. Brennan to serve as the Alternate. Are there any others that would like to express an interest in serving on this Board? Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the two?
So moved.
Second.
Second. We have a motion to approve Dr. Nellis as a Representative and Dr. Brennan as the Alternate on the Central Virginia Governor School for Science and Technology Governing Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any opposed? All right. Moving right on along. The School Board elects a School Board Member to represent the Lynchburg City Schools on the Governor's Regional Accelerate STEM Academy Governing Board each year. In addition, the School Board elects an alternate to represent the School Division as necessary. I have, I had Ms. Charleeta Mason express an interest as being the Representative to the Board and Dr. Brennan as the Alternate. Do I have any other interest? Do I have any comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? It's been moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. One more. Agenda B10. This is for information and action at the next meeting. The School Board Governance, Norms, and Protocols. The Lynchburg City School Board, through a professional development activity conducted by the Virginia School Boards Association, developed governance norms and protocols, which were approved on August the 1st, 2018. This document, which appears as an attachment to this Agenda Report, provides Board Meeting Agenda Development, interactions with the School Community, professional development, and the evaluation of the Superintendent in itself. The School Board will review the governance norms and protocols during this presentation. On the next page, we have a listing of six governance norms and protocols that I'm going to read that kind of outline what, how we proceed as a School Board. We agree to employ the following norms in our interactions. We will hear each opinion, but ultimately act as one. The Chairman or Designee will speak as the official voice of the Board. We will be mindful of the different roles and responsibilities throughout the school system and maintain a focus on policy and governance. We will be aware of the different roles that we play as individual, Board Members, Citizens, Parents, et cetera. We will be focused on our work as a Board and not interfere with the day-to-day operations of the school system, which is the responsibility of Superintendent. We will maintain open communication with each other, the administration, and the community at large. Information shared with one Board Member will be shared with all Members. If considerable worker time is required to generate data, the full Board must endorse the request. And then on the next three pages, there are kind of an outline of how we agree to behave as a Board, and I think what we are to do with this is to open up the floor for questions and comments, and then if we have questions that we see after this, send them in to Ms. Spinner, and then she will share with the whole Board those comments that we can then discuss and act on at the next Board Meeting. Questions?
Next Board Meeting, you're looking at July 24th?
That's a good point.
That's where this will be in?
The one after that.
One after that.
Well, we'll move this not to the 24th, but to the, the one in August. August, the, yeah, 7th. Dr. Ms. Col, Mason?
The only thing I see, there are several things that have asterisks by them, and there's no key or anything, we're referring to the asterisks. So, like use of most, social media, there are two items that have asterisks by them, but there's no-
Comment.
Comment or, so we just need to look at that.
We need to look at that and, and give back feedback so that we can. There's also one on here that I, we've, when and how the Board conducts a self-evaluation, that's to be determined, and I think this is the third year, and it's, we need to do it. Yes, sir?
I'd like to see some timelines. The Agenda is available 15 days before the meeting, 21 days before the meeting. I know, what is the timeline for Superintendent to share the Agenda with the Chair and the Chair to share with the Board? So we have sufficient time to read through the material before we come here.
I, you're saying that getting it on the Thursday before the meeting and on Tuesday was, was, is a short turnaround time?
It's a disservice to everybody, you're saying.
Yes, sir? Any other questions or comments? Ms. Dr. Coleman?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I'm wondering, the, the August meeting would be when we would next deal with this, but I'm, I'm wondering whether or not we need, under your leadership, to have some conversations around a few additional items that may not already be in our grid. For example, I know that the Virginia School Board Association affords us numerous opportunities by which we can be involved in advocacy and development of leaders, et cetera, so forth and so on. I don't think we've always been taking advantage of that, so I would like the Board to consider, you know, where, where do we want to fit in that? I mean, there are several School Divisions across Virginia that are very actively involved in getting the General Assembly and other entities to support them in their various ventures. Dr. Edwards and Dr. Copeland and Mr. Beckles are working hard, et cetera, but I just would like us to begin to ponder, how do we position ourselves and what is our expectation? If we're going to be that championship Board that you want us to be, are we fully utilizing what we could be doing through the SBA and recommend, recommendations around that? And so I, I know this is not the time to talk about it, but I'd like to have a discussion about that at some point around our protocols.
Dr. Gupta?
I know, Madam Chair, you are firm about certain things. I think we need to set our goals for next year, especially when it comes to pay raises for all the employees of Lynchburg City School System. I know you're being very proponent of that, and that should be one of the board, all the goals for this upcoming year are laid out now, so we check our performance as we go along and we see where do we stand.
Excellent. What I will do is take this information and I will see what we need to do in terms of following up with the Virginia School Board Association. I know that we have a training session September 21st. We're supposed to have one in Charlottesville, and that might be a good time to pursue this, what the goals, working through the, the discussion and dialogue together with their leadership. I know that Legislative Act C is something that other School Divisions are actively pursuing, and I think that this is something that we need to also think about and recreate. Any further discussions or comments? Appreciate this. If you do have any more, if you email Denise, she will make sure that we all get that information and that we have it together. Ms. Mason?
Since we're talking about Board norms and everything, in your packet as well, we have the Board Orientation Dates to work with the Administration for that, so I just didn't want that to get lost. You have a lot of stuff in your packet. I didn't want that to get lost. And in line with what you talked about in terms of setting goals, we also have other tentative dates, and I will say they're tentative because we just kind of looked at a calendar and saw some open time, but, but it, since we're discussing the Board, some of those tentative dates, or at least one of them, is for a Board Retreat in October, which would be great for us to get together to do some of the things that you talked about. There's also, and I know Counsel will probably appreciate this as well, a Joint School Board Council Meeting Retreat, or whatever we want to call that, so we put some tentative information in there as well, in your, in your packet for the Board to consider, but I know the Board is very anxious to work together as a body and be that high-performing Board that we talked about when we, when we went away, so we thought that if we get some information in there, at least give you some time to think about it, you could let us know. And all the dates are tentative. We can change them, move them, that kind of thing, but I wanted to bring that to your attention.
That's this piece of paper in your folder. Thank you so much for bringing that up and for pointing, for getting that for us. Helps us to get it on the calendar. Okay. That finishes the reorganization. It is now that part of the Board Meeting for Public Comments. We have a number of people signed up for public comments. We allow 30 minutes for public comments, and we have to stick to that. I have two things to read regarding the public comments. Persons appearing before the School Board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures. Make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to his or her official duties. Engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the School Board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibility of School Board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit his comments to five minutes, his or her comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of his or her presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at School Board Meetings is 30 minutes. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The Board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussions at this time. There's an additional item for me to read. And if anyone is signed up to speak tonight in opposition to the award of day treatment services contracts, and Mr. Cabalas, Kabazis, I believe that may include you, please be aware that there is a process for an offerer to protest the decision to award a contract. The School Board does not have a role in the process at this point in time. Under the Procurement Act- Procurement Act or the city ordinance, and we do not intend to interject ourselves in the process. I wanted this to be clear so that your expectations will be, your expectations will be realistic about what we can be accomplished, what we can accomplish during public comments. All right. The first speaker, and I apologize, I hope I say your name right, Mr. Hostler?
Yeah, that was good.
I'm sorry.
I brought some information packets to the board members, is okay if I pass it around?
If you give it to Ms. Spinner. Thank you.
All right. My name is Ryan Hostler. I'm a Lynchburg resident and father of two Lynchburg City Elementary School students. The group I am representing is more recess for Lynchburg City Schools and has over 160 signatures on change.org for this petition. And the issue is that Lynchburg City Schools, currently, a typical day, you have about 30 minutes of recess for the kids, and that's not really adequate for, for their health and their academic well-being. So the purpose of this is to encourage the board to increase that to two 30-minute recess periods instead of one, maybe one in the morning and one in the afternoon. And why this is important is exercise promotes good health. The Academy of, American Academy of Pediatrics, the Center for Disease Control, the American Heart Association all say that kids should get at least 60 minutes of vigorous to moderate exercise a day, and they're just not getting that at school. And at least for my kids, I know I drop them off the bus at eight and they get home at four, and by the time they get home, there's not much time for, for exercise at the end of the day either. So it's also good for academic performance. The Institute of Medicine, which is a unit of the National Academy of Sciences, reported that there's a growing body of evidence suggesting that children who are more active are better able to focus their attention, are quicker to perform simple tasks, have better working memories, are better at solving problems, and maybe most importantly these days, they perform better on standardized tests. And also, as I said, there's a, there's a lot of parental support for this. I, I don't normally get involved in issues and stand up and do these things, but this has again been a, something very important to me, and I've talked to a lot of parents, and as I said, there's been over 160 parents in town that agreed this is the right thing to do. And, and now, the board actually has the power to make this change, or at least as I understand it. Recently, there was a law passed earlier this year, H. 1419, so the General Assembly of Virginia passed that, and it essentially allows local school, school boards to count unstructured recreational time recess as part of their calculation of the total instructional time, so it can count as some of the teaching time, up to a maximum of 15 percent. So based on my math, if typical educational time is six and a half hours a day, that comes to 15 percent of that's about an hour. So that would work out just about right. So what I would like to ask the board to do, again, is to, for the 2018-2019 school year, for Lynchburg City Schools, elementary schools, to instead of having one 30-minute recess a day, to have two. And, you know, the PE time, if PE twice a week, that could certainly count toward that. So that's, that's all I have.
The next speaker, and I apologize again, is Mr. Cabazas. Did I say it wrong?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Damian Cabazas. I'm the CEO of Horizon Behavioral Health, and Chairman Morrison, Vice Chair Coleman, and Board, School Board Members, and Dr. Edwards, thank you for allowing me to speak for a few minutes tonight. Normally around this time, Horizon presents to city council, basically presenting an update on our services and outcomes, and this year, we're, we're going to present to school boards as well, just to give them, you know, sort of a summary of the year. And in particular, this school board will be talking about therapeutic day treatment because that's what we, you know, that's what, you know, we're, I know you're mostly interested in. So Horizon began offering therapeutic day treatment in two schools in 1999, and in the academic year of 2017-18, we were partnered with 30 schools within the city of Lynchburg, counties of Amherst, Bedford, and Campbell, and served over 600 students. Horizon also operates an alternative education therapeutic day treatment program that's located in Old Forest Road in Lynchburg. In 2017-2018, Horizon provided approximately 27,000 of pro bono therapeutic day treatment services to LCS students. We serve nine schools in Lynchburg. Our staffing in therapeutic day treatment are about 92 clinicians. Overall, our headcount at Horizon is about 750 employees with about 500 clinicians, and we have about 52 locations when you include the schools that we're providing services in. We served in 2017-2018, 239 LCS students, and of those, 168 had histories of trauma. So additional services that we provided them with was psychiatric services, case management, intensive in-home, crisis stabilization, and outpatient therapy. And we were pleased that we were, in 2017, we were accredited by CARF, which is the highest level of accreditation that a behavioral health organization can receive. Just some outcomes, in 2017-2018, in terms of attendance in Lynchburg, attendance for our students were over 90 percent, and weekly family contact was over 90 percent as well. We saw decreased in, in, decreased in, decreased aggression, improved concentration, and improved social and emotional competency. 74 percent of middle school students improved their identified lagging skills in executive functioning. So we're pleased about those outcomes, and we just wanted to say, yes, we, we are disappointed in the decision about the contracts, but we do appreciate Dr. Edwards hearing our concerns, and we respect the decision, but wanted to remind the community that we're, we're not a private provider, we're a local government unit, we are a community-based organization, and we're committed to the jurisdictions that we serve. By code, we provide case management and emergency services, and we're committed to our children. This is beyond the contract for us, this is about our children. I'm a parent, as many as you are as well, and this is about our children, and I'm advocating on behalf of the children that in the event they should need our services, we're always here to, to serve the children and their families because we're committed, and our team is committed to being here. And I, I failed to mention, we do have a 15-member board that represents Amherst, Appomattox, Bedford, Campbell, and Lynchburg, and I want to recognize our board chair, Clyde Clark, which is here also, which worked in Lynchburg City School System for many, many years. So thank you for your time, and please keep Horizon in mind as a resource to our children and our families in Lynchburg. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Edwards and members of the school board, thank you for allowing me the privilege to come and stand before you this evening. The objective, I'm a representative of my family, my daughter and my wife, and also my, my community college, Hill, is where I live, and also serve as a pastor. The objective for me today is, is to share with the board the importance of availability and access for your, your community and for parents like myself who have children that attend Lynchburg City Schools. It was my experience this year that my daughter, after going through an episode of depression and anxiety disorder, that she was falling behind, she was also being labeled as a student that was unwilling to perform, but she was struggling. In the event, I, I was given the privilege to sit down and talk with administrators at her school, and also working with counselors and teachers, we were able to come together and have a conversation. And in that conversation, we came up with a resolve in how we could help my daughter make it through the school year. Had we not had the opportunity to sit down with one another and to discuss the various details of what was going on, my daughter would have been suspended, she was already getting referrals, and she would have fell through the cracks. For me, that was monumental. It helped me learn more about being father, it helped me to be more sympathetic and demonstrate empathy for the teachers that work hard to, to make sure and provide every opportunity for my daughter to succeed, and not just my daughter, but every student that attends our schools. So for me, it, it really hit home, and I understand policy, I understand protocol, but if you could find a way to crack the door, open the door, or make way for, for your ears to hear, your eyes to see, and your heart to feel some of the things that's going on in our communities, because there are so many kids who don't have parents who are able to take the time to go and sit down and advocate for them. So someone needs to be able to hear the cries of our community, someone, and I believe that you are the group that could hear those cries and, and make some changes if necessary to make it so that our children will have every opportunity afforded to them so that they might be successful and get an education. Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Hi, my name is Vicente, I'm speaking as an individual. Hi, my name is Vicente, I'm a graduate of EC Glass, 2009. The last time I spoke at this board was almost a year ago, as a reaction to the rescinded of DACA, Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals. A lot has happened since then. I would like to applaud the efforts of Dr. Edwards and Latonya Brown and Ethel Reeves for their willingness to work with the community on the issue of DACA and undocumented youth in our schools and immigration. I believe that through that process, we've developed a sort of culture of what it's like for our community to work with this structure. But today, I am here to speak about a different topic. I want to talk about the overall role that race plays in our city schools, because I attended EC Glass, I can only speak as my experience as an alumnus of EC Glass. But EC Glass is, was a very, from what I hear still, a very segregated school, and that had a lot of outcomes on particularly students of color, black and brown students, through a lack of access to higher-level classes, a lack of access to support to attend college, a discrepancy in disciplinary action against students of color, which eventually leads to repeated referrals, detentions, suspensions, which eventually have been pushing out students of color from the school system. We call this the school-to-prison pipeline. This has been an issue in our community for a long time, and we've known this, and it's been very difficult to talk about it because it's been such a sensitive issue, and people have been very defensive about it from the teacher level all the way up to the administration. So as I said, this takes very, various levels, whether it has to do with classes and achievement gap, whether it has to do with disciplinary, disciplinary action against students because of dress code, the use of cell phones in the school, language, all types of infractions, right? And the bottom line is that many teachers have an underlying bias that is difficult to regulate, and students of color have been affected by these disciplinary actions at a much higher level than white students. And until we can admit that, there's no way to change it, right? So what I really wanted to say is that, the problem is that we have no access to this school board, right? The school board wasn't elected by the community. We weren't allowed to nominate any of the chairs today. We're not allowed to meet with any of the school board members, even though we haven't been able to see that policy upon request many times, and...
You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ivory Glass, and I am a stroke survivor, so please forgive me if I, this is my therapy, so I'll try to be very fast. I'm a product of Lynchburg, Virginia. I went to Bedford Hills Elementary, Dunbar Middle, and EC Glass. I, I had a great time in school, no problems with the discipline system. Sadly, a lot of children who look like me aren't as lucky and do have problems with our school discipline system. If it had not been for my mom being vocal and involved with each school, I bet I would not have been quite as lucky. So I'm here to advocate, advocate for those students who are not as lucky as me. I'm here to stress how important it is for us to prove, to improve communication between our school board members and the community. We have been asking to speak with our school board members for a while. I heard you, when you said that there is a policy that won't let you meet with the community groups. We haven't been able to find the policy you mentioned. If we cannot find the policy, how else would any, how else will, how else in the, how would, how is anyone else in the community supposed to find it? I know each of you wouldn't volunteer in the school, to be in the school board if you didn't care about our kids here in Lynchburg. I care about them too, and am here to ask you to start meeting with the community members so that we can all work together to improve things for our children. Thank you.
My name is Phil Stump. Dr. Edwards and the school board, thank you for allowing me to address you today. You've heard about the use of suspensions as disciplinary measures in our schools. I am speaking as an individual, as a father of three children who have gone through Lynchburg City Schools. I find that the use of suspensions is very counterproductive to education. You might ask, how can discipline be managed without suspensions? I am going to recommend to you restorative justice as one effective alternative to suspensions and to other punitive measures. Through restorative justice, students who have caused harm through inappropriate behavior are brought together with those who have been harmed, with a focus on students taking responsibility for their actions and repairing the harm rather than on punishment. It might, for example, involve student peer juries or trained student mediators who would assist their peers in mediating disputes. It would teach students and also staff how to peacefully resolve conflicts. It prepares students to solve problems in the future. Punitive measures are quicker, but they suspend students and disrupt their education. These are the very students who desperately need this education. Punitive measures also create a toxic atmosphere, which disrespects students and their families and impedes education. and impedes education. Restorative justice has been shown to create better school climates and strengthen positive social interactions between students and staff. Instituting a restorative justice program would involve an initial outlay of funds for training of staff, but the program could be introduced incrementally, starting with one group of committed staff. After receiving training, these could then serve as volunteers to train other staff and students. At all stages, students, parents, and other community members would be involved, and I think what we've heard is often, community members are not involved, and this is a great part of the problem. Although restorative justice is ultimately a long-range strategy, it could be introduced on a trial basis relatively soon. I would ask the board if they have done any investigation of restorative justice as an alternative to suspensions and other punitive measures. And I would just echo Vicente and Ivory's comment that we're frustrated that there's not a chance to talk with the board about this and to hear their response. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Melissa Chesney, and I am a school bus driver for Lynchburg City Schools. The last time that I was afforded the opportunity to speak to you was about a year and a half ago, and my message has not necessarily changed. I have been driving, I'm going into my fourth year here at Lynchburg City Schools, and I drive for Sheffield Elementary, Sandusky Middle School, Heritage High School, Linkhorn Elementary School, and I also drive for our students at one of the alternative high schools. As you can imagine, I am on the road a large majority of my day. My day starts at 5:30 in the morning when I get my child, who is five, out of bed, and we go to the school bus shop, and she largely spends a lot of time without me. That is because of, and I'm ashamed to say it, our low pay. I have to work around 60 hours a week to make my ends meet, and that is not something as a single parent that I want to have to do, but it is what is necessary. My pay is at $12,060 a year, and that is disgraceful. The amount of responsibility that is on my shoulders every day, transporting around 300 students to and from school, through rush hour traffic, and people who cut me off in a 14-ton vehicle, and parents who scream at me if I'm not on time to come home if I do not work those extra hours with a paycheck that looks at $375 after all of the amount that I have to pay for insurance for just myself and not covering my child. I don't believe that $375 twice a month is justice that you are giving to us drivers. The other thing that I would like to say as far as that goes is that this is my pay for the next eight years. I have been here for four years, and I will not get a raise for another four years. My trainer has been here for 13 years, and she is only four pay steps above me. She trained me very well to do my job, and she, at 13 years here, does not get but four steps above me. It is not acceptable, I'm sorry to say. We have a step program that we worked very hard with Ms. G to come up with, to support her, it was approved, but yet, when our contracts came out, it was not reflected. We have been under new management at the bus shop with the appointment of Mr. Russell Stone, and that has been wonderful for us, as the fact that he does know what our job entails, so this is a step in the right direction. However, we still are subject to every social service available. If I went to the social service building down on Ninth Street, I could get food stamps, I could get Medicaid for my child, I could get all sorts of range of social services, but I choose not to do that because I want to work for my money, as any adult who wants to get ahead would do. And I work 60 hours a week for you all, for our students, I love my job. The platform that I have to help steer these children in the right direction is immense, and I love my job, but I cannot afford to continue to work for you at $12,060 a year. It is pitiful. I could go to GLTC and make $17 an hour with no experience. You all train, all of us, very well to do our job, and then we can go anywhere else and make much more money. We stay here for our children, but we also stay here hoping that you all can come up with something better for us in the future. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Our last speaker for tonight, Mr. Flood.
First of all, I'd like to thank y'all once more, Dr. Edwards and the school board. I know y'all enjoy seeing my face. It's been 2014, and I was thinking about something that y'all amended, this ex-offender with nonviolent, y'all said y'all want to do it 15 years. I don't know who came up with that, but I don't understand it. You go to school 12 years, and college three years, maybe four, so when they come home, they gotta wait 15 years to go volunteer. That don't make sense. The more I thought about it, who came up with that in this school board? I mean, then you want to do five years. Somebody gotta come home, they ain't never been in trouble, accidentally done something, got a felony on their record, and they can't volunteer in the school system until five years. Who comes up with that? My question today, I done a little homework, and I realized that since 91, people that had volunteered before y'all made this rule, Lynchburg City Schools law, not a state law, what happened? What volunteer was an ex-offender done something for y'all to change this rule? And I haven't seen one person. And y'all have people that go through the whole routine, back checks and go through, and then you end up catching, they raped a kid, but they're a school teacher, they're a principal, but they've been in the school system like two or three years, and they got by y'all with a felony on their record. But they was legit. Then you had somebody over EC Glass, had a DUI the first time, they gave him a break, then you let him go again, twice before he had to be suspended. We had a program at Miller Park called Brothers Keeper, or Brothers Killer. I didn't see one school board member over there, ex-offenders, doing something positive, trying to help these kids, because we need everybody. It's not about me, it's about everybody. And the only way we're gonna work together, we gotta, you know, we gotta do something different now. I listen to all these people come up here and talk, everybody got problems, money problems, this problem, but how can we work together if we don't start talking about this? You don't keep seeing me, and I'm gonna keep coming, because something gotta change. And y'all need to go out there and see why these people, that's ex-offenders with nonviolent crimes, need to be given a second chance, to volunteer to help y'all. When y'all got bullets in school, but the teachers, they can't do nothing. Whatever's going on, we know the problem, but what's the solution? Give us a chance, at least try to help y'all, because what I've seen, like done my homework, y'all let people come through the system, that had rape charges, and end up being a principal at Lynchburg Detention Home. Thank you.
That now takes us to special presentations. We have a resolution of recognition. During this presentation, the school board will recognize Katie K. Snyder for her years of service as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board. Ms. Snyder has served as a school board member for a total of six years. I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Nellis.
So we do have a resol... Yeah, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium so we can do this right. So we do have a resolution, commendation, and appreciation from Mrs. Katie Snyder, upon her retirement as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board, presented by the Lynchburg City School Board. Mrs. Katie Snyder, a champion crusader for public education in the city of Lynchburg, has worked diligently as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board for a total of six years. Her professional manner in dealing with people and issues earned her favor as a caring and compassionate individual who devoted herself to the service of Lynchburg City Schools. Mrs. Katie Snyder has been an able spokesperson and supporter of educational causes. She has been encouraging to students and their families. Mrs. Katie Snyder, a parent herself, was knowledgeable of the challenges that many students, parents, teachers, and staff members encounter. Throughout her service, she was sensitive to the educational needs of all students and championed new and creative approaches to education. Her questions and comments demonstrated a keen understanding of the topics being discussed. With this resolution, the Lynchburg City School Board pays tribute to Mrs. Katie Snyder, a person of excellence and integrity, who by effort and by example made valuable and far-reaching contributions to public education in Lynchburg, Virginia. Whereas Mrs. Katie Snyder served with distinction as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board for six years, and whereas Mrs. Katie Snyder's keen insight and foresight were qualities of leadership that were appropriate to the needs of the Lynchburg City Schools during this period of change, challenge, and growth. And whereas Mrs. Katie Snyder consistently attended school events and programs, demonstrating her true support of LCS and all students with her presence during school board meetings and at school events, she also demonstrated her commitment to education across the state through her service as a Virginia School Boards Association mentor to new school board members. And whereas Mrs. Katie Snyder, while on the school board, contributed to the approval of a new Heritage High School, the implementation of new programs, including the Empowerment Academy to help improve the LCS graduation rate, the hiring of an interim and new superintendent, and the approval of budgets in support of staff compensation and student achievement. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lynchburg City School Board of Lynchburg, Virginia takes pride in the excellent service that Mrs. Katie Snyder rendered to the operation and successes of public schools in this community, and be it resolved that the Lynchburg City School Board of Lynchburg, Virginia hereby affirms its appreciation to Mrs. Katie Snyder for six years of devoted service to public education, during which she demonstrated courage and tenacity in the pursuit of educational excellence. Her numerous contributions will affect generations to come. The Lynchburg City School Board wishes to commend Mrs. Katie Snyder for the quality of leadership on behalf of the school division and its youth, and for the quality of her stewardship on behalf of the city of Lynchburg, Virginia. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? All in favor? Aye. This is for you, this is the real deal, thank you very much. This is six years as a volunteer, and our compensation is the occasional sandwich, so...
May I say a few words? Thank you. Thanks. So, thank you, Dr. Nellis, my fellow board members. I want to start by saying how disappointed I am that I have to say goodbye now and not in three years, but that said, I'm so thankful for the time that I had to serve on the board, and I wouldn't have wanted to be any other board member than the one I was. I look back at my time with pride, I know that while I served, I kept the very most important thing as my number-one interest, and that's the students of Lynchburg City Schools. The students who excelled, those students who struggled, and those students who just maintained, that might have otherwise been overlooked. As a board, we do the best we can with what we're given. Please remember that the board does not generate the revenue that we allocate, and it is not our job to be humble in asking for what our students and our staff needs to get our kids to graduation. Whether it's been instructional assistance for the lowest grades, so that by the time kids are in third grade, they can read up to grade level, a long overdue pay raise to our staff, or an empowerment academy to get students back on track to graduation, we need to use our voices as school board members to demand that city council supports our schools. I want to thank central office and the staff, and the two board clerks that I've worked with, for being available to answer questions and provide information, sometimes with very short notice. I want to thank all the board members that I've served with now and in years past and who I've learned from. We all know the time commitment that it takes, and how our pay is a sandwich, and sometimes, if you're lucky, your favorite flavor of chips. I want to thank my children who are here today, Kalen, Luke, and Avon, two in the schools right now and one upcoming, for sacrificing their time with me for the last six years, for giving up meals together and bedtime stories so I could work late and be a voice for the kids in our community who don't have one. Lastly, I want to thank my husband, Jason, also here, for six years of rearranging schedules, meeting me here on Court Street so we could kid swap, for sitting solo at events that our kids were in because I had a meeting, or a work session, or a training that I needed to be at, for being supportive and encouraging me to seek appointment on the school board in the first place, and for understanding just how important our work is. Gonna miss all you guys, you know I'm readily available, and I encourage you to take all the words you heard today about working together with the community at heart. Thanks, everyone.
The next, Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation, presentation by Mrs. Gillette, Director of the Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation. Will provide an update to the school board about the foundation's progress during the past school year, and this is always such a rewarding and uplifting presentation to the earth, so thank you. Yeah, just, I'm on the...
Congratulations to Chairman Morrison and Vice Chairman Coleman, and Dr. Edwards and the Lynchburg City School Board, thank you for having me here this evening, it's a pleasure
to be here, and I appreciate your time and patience as I work through what we've done over the past year. My name is Jodi Gillette, and I'm the Executive Director of the Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation. The LCS Education Foundation was founded in 1985 with the mission of encouraging innovation in the classroom and to raise public funds above and beyond public revenues. The Education Foundation works to secure financial support from individuals and businesses for selected projects and programs which are consistent with the goals and priorities of the Lynchburg City School Board. After working to advance the Lynchburg City Schools for over 30 years, we are operating with a new mission statement to better define the purpose and function of the LCS Education Foundation, advancing excellence and equity in the Lynchburg City Schools through advocacy and educational funding. We do this through grant funding for our teachers, no-cost access to supplemental educational resources for our teachers and students, scholastic recognitions and access to educational opportunities through scholarships, and advocacy to both support and promote our schools. We make this happen with the guidance and leadership of this exceptional board of trustees, and I could not be more fortunate than to work with this roster of folks. We are happy to report that we have once again had a very successful year and are proud to share the following... proud to share the following 2017-2018 accomplishments with you. We just celebrated twenty-six years of classroom innovation grants. We awarded forty-two classroom innovation grants totaling eighty-six thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars, bringing our grant total since the start of this program to over eight hundred thousand dollars. Funding for our seventeen-eighteen grants came from individual donors as well as fifty-nine corporate sponsors, including two new supporters for this program, M.H. Masonry and Scott Insurance. We awarded thirty classroom innovation grants at funding levels between five hundred and two thousand dollars, and twelve master classroom innovation grants with funding up to five thousand dollars each. We continue to work with the finance department to issue grant funding throughout the school division to streamline the accounting effort and to better ensure proper implementation of grant funds. Grants are varied and touch on all schools at all grade levels and across the disciplines. Examples of grants from this past year include water quality studies on the James River. Reading opens a treasure trunk of learning that motivated and engaged reluctant readers through hands-on learning of reenactments of historical events with high-quality costuming to better bring lessons to life at RS Payne. Heritage High School students from cross disciplines, from career tech, building trades, tech graphics, marketing classes, and English classes, work together to gain insight into the African-American experience in Central Virginia. Hutcherson Early Learning Center students purchased ten-- or there were ten tricycles purchased for these students to better engage them in physical activity designed to strengthen the major muscle groups and increase heart rate. We also are working to find funding to sustain a therapeutic art class at Fort Hill Community School and enhance the driver safety programs in our schools. This year, as the city of Lynchburg is working to address poverty in our community, we got a bit more hands-on with our grant program, and we're more involved than usual with the Empowerment Academy's Empowerment to Employment Classroom Innovation Grant. The Empowerment Academy, as you know, is a credit recovery program for students who are not on track to graduate on time. As these students are struggling to graduate from high school, they seem to be the perfect candidates on which to focus services and ensure that they have a strong and positive path to school or the workforce after high school. Through classroom innovation grant funding, the Empowerment Academy's guidance counselor was able to secure a virtual job shadowing program to expose students to a wide array of career opportunities. We then worked with Vector Space and funded a hands-on program to develop both interest and skills as selected students designed and built wireless Bluetooth speakers and engaged in graphic design work. This also required securing a mentor who worked closely with these students and guided them throughout their projects. The Reality Check Program visited the Empowerment Academy to provide students with money management skills and a visit from the community college, inform students about educational opportunities. The Ed Foundation then worked with the Empowerment Academy to line up the following comprehensive roster of speakers to stimulate students' interest in local career opportunities. A firefighter, HR representative for Hanwha Asdel Manufacturing Farm, the Tech Hire Workforce Navigator, Virginia Technical Institute, Savan Malool International Hair Academy, Nissan Car Salesman, Elizabeth's Early Learning Center and Daycare, Norfolk Southern Corporation's Trainmaster, the Director of the Workforce Development Board, who brought along someone from Banker Steel and a welding simulator, Market at Main Restaurant, and Central College of Nursing. Feedback from the students has been positive. After each speaker came to visit, they all wanted to be that thing, which was awesome, and so time will tell how things filter out. And we want to work to establish this program to ensure that all students have a strong and positive path for their future as they walk out of the halls of our high schools. Tech Hire Workforce Development Board and scholarship opportunities are key components to the advancement of these students, and we want to be sure that the school division and city and regional workforce initiatives are working together to ensure their future success. As you can see, our annual classroom innovation grants are far-reaching and have the potential for significant impact in our classrooms. To celebrate these efforts, a reception was held at EC Glass High School on Wednesday, May ninth, to recognize our grant recipients, showcase their projects, and thank our grant supporters. Teachers, sponsors, principals, school administrators, DARTs, school board members, city leadership, and foundation trustees were invited to see the impressive projects developed with these funds. And although all sponsors are recognized each year for their support, we provide special recognition on the key anniversaries of our donors to make sure they know that their long-term investment is positively impacting the innovative environment in our schools. EC Glass National Honor Society students were on hand to help with the setup and cleanup of the program, as well as assist teachers with the transport of their displays. The grant's reception was once again catered by the Culinary Arts Students at EC Glass High School, which provided another platform for the division to showcase one of the many wonderful career tech programs. We continue to offer two notification dates for our grant cycle, a spring notification date for grant approval so teachers can start the school year knowing they have funding to implement a program from the first day of school, and the second end of September or early October deadline to allow teachers who identify a problem or opportunity in the first month of school to have an avenue for funding that school year. The spring cycle resulted in fourteen grant applications for the eighteen-nineteen school year, resulting in twelve grant awards, four master grants, and eight classroom innovation grants totaling just under twenty-seven thousand dollars. The fall application process opened in May and will close September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, and our sponsors are so fantastic, they sometimes come forward and award funds even before we ask because we haven't even started our funding cycle yet, and we had the resources to award those funds. So, we're very happy and proud to have that support. We continue to work with launch liaisons, to work with each grant team to make sure that each applicant has the information they need at the start of their grant, the metrics they need to properly evaluate their results, and that someone with the link outside of the teacher's classroom has a good understanding of the grant for future implementation. We thank our grant review team of Ann Berry, April Bruce, Al Coleman, Maria Jaeger, Ethel Reeves, Dixie Sears, Willis Vanderwerker, and Chuck Yarborough, who commit time and offer their expertise to our classroom innovation grant program. Our Tools for Schools warehouse continues to grow. We were once again able to leverage our donations by investing twenty thousand four hundred dollars in donations into more than one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars worth of materials for our teachers and students. The Ed Foundation delivered one thousand three hundred thirty school supply kits and eight hundred and fifty-two backpacks before the start of the seventeen-eighteen school year for all LCS students in need at all grade levels. For the eighteen-nineteen school year, grants from the Greater Lynchburg Community Foundation, NiSource, Norfolk Southern, and individual donations designated for school supplies, Ed Foundation funds, and the many resources secured through school supply drives with the help of Partners in Education are allowing us to distribute one thousand one hundred ninety school supply sets and six hundred twenty-five backpacks to satisfy the full anticipated demand of all LCS students in need before the first day of school. All distribution to students is handled at the school level through principals and guidance counselors to ensure true needs are being met, and they set up little closets like this in their supply areas so students can go in and actually feel like they have the shopping experience and pick out the pocket folder colors that they want, et cetera, et cetera. Through several onsite shopping days at the start of the beginning of the school year and the continuation of our online ordering system so teachers do not have to leave the classroom to get the supplies they need, we filled seven hundred and seventy-five teacher orders during this past school year. All of this was made possible due to the hard work and dedication of Tracy Baker, who diligently volunteers uncountable hours at the warehouse with the help of another volunteer, Michelle Wood. And both of these women, you should know, don't have children in the Lynchburg City Schools anymore, and they still roll up their sleeves and work hard in that warehouse to help us get those supplies out to teachers. They are committed to making these resources more accessible to a greater number of teachers. In March-- oh, there's another warehouse picture. That's on a good day. It's very neat and clean. After the teachers come through, things are a little more shaken up. In March, our twelfth annual breakfast with the superintendent was held despite the fact that we had, yes, an interim superintendent but not our full superintendent in place yet. But we went on anyway, and it was fabulous. It was held at the University of Lynchburg. It was Lynchburg College at the time, but now University of Lynchburg, with an audience of four hundred and twenty-two business and community leaders. The EC Glass Junior Air Force ROTC and the Heritage High School Instrumental Chamble Ensemble kicked off the event, and attendees were introduced to incoming Superintendent Dr. Crystal Edwards through a recorded message centered around glows and grows. This program was definitely a grow as the audience enjoyed the keynote presentation in their own words, "Growing Up in LCS." EC Glass High School English Teacher, Mr. Aaron Reed, served as Master of Ceremonies as EC Glass Seniors Macy Brandon and Kyle Mendez, and Heritage High School Seniors Grace Chan and Manon Shaw impressed the crowd with their intellect, poise, and compassion as they shared stories and insights of their experience at LCS, things they've learned, mistakes they've made, and how they chose to address and learn from challenges and opportunities presented to them by their school communities. If these students are the examples of the next generation, the future is indeed bright. We thank our eleven lead sponsors and fifty-one table sponsors for making this event such a successful community, school, and fundraising event. And those are the proud parents of those truly phenomenal teens and the wife of that truly phenomenal teacher. And I guess we have a couple of principals mixed in there as well. On Sunday, May sixth, the Foundation hosted our fourteenth annual Senior Honors Recognition Program. This event is our opportunity to recognize the top fifteen graduating seniors from each high school. Each honor student can invite two family guests, along with a special teacher from their K-12 LCS experience. We congratulate those teachers who were selected this year for being outstanding in their students' lives. We were honored this year to have astronaut and Heritage High School graduate Leland Melvin share insightful and motivating keynote remarks that kept everyone riveted to their seats. Students were individually recognized and received their certificate honoring their success. This program was sponsored by all of Lynchburg's area colleges, Central College of Nursing, Central Virginia Community College, Liberty University, Randolph College, Sweetbrier College, University of Lynchburg, and the Virginia University of Lynchburg. We thank each of them for honoring these students' accomplishments and making the special recognition possible, and the kids clearly had a good time and enjoyed jumping and many other things with Leland. He was very gracious to give us our time and make that commitment so far in advance so we could plan accordingly for that great night. The Education Foundation awarded forty-one thousand five hundred dollars in scholarships to graduating seniors, thanks to the ongoing support of the Al Strubantz Foundation, whose scholarships continue to grow for our students, Belvac Production Machinery, the Dover Foundation, the Greater Lynchburg Community Foundation, the James Howard Scholarship, Lynchburg Junior Women's Club, Orthodontic Arts, Taylor Brothers of Lynchburg, and Technical Management Resources. New this year were two M.H. Masonry scholarships with a primary focus on community service, and a new Stacy Knight Westgate Scholarship for a Heritage High School baseball player who was nominated by his coach. Although there were no new awards this year, we continue to serve as a fiscal agent for the Charlie and Mary Jane Pryor Excellence in Science Scholarship for twenty-five thousand dollars awarded to one student who received an advanced studies high school diploma, possessed a GPA of three point eight or higher, and was planning to study and pursue the studies in the field of science. The first student to receive the scholarship graduated from college this year, and we continue to provide funding for the other three recipients. Strubantz scholarships. The Al Strubantz Foundation significantly increased their support this year, increasing their level of traditional scholarships and investing heavily in our students' future for two new scholarships for a total of forty-four thousand dollars in scholarship funding for LCS students. Sixteen thousand-- I know that chart's a little small on the screen, but you do have it in your packet, I believe. Sixteen thousand dollars total was awarded this year to five graduating students who are pursuing a career tech-oriented field. Up to thirteen thousand will be awarded to an eleventh-grade student in the fall of eighteen nineteen, who was enrolled in a career tech class, who was nominated by their teacher and who meets established requirements. Go into the detail on this some other time, but just to be clear, the student will be selected and nominated from a career tech class, but that student in eleventh grade is not committing their life to that path, that they do not have to pursue a career tech path. Same is true for a fifteen thousand dollar scholarship that we are awarding to a seventh-grade student from the seventeen-eighteen school year this past year, who was nominated by their teacher and who meets established requirements. And just with the few transitions in staff, we are still just in the process of awarding that, but more news on that soon. With so many scholarship offerings, we are exploring opportunities with Beacon of Hope to streamline the scholarship application and review process to make scholarship awards more accessible and equitable for students. So, hopefully, we'll have more information on that shortly, too. We continue to offer funding assistance through our James K. Candler Opportunity Fund for students with identified fiscal needs who are capable of academic excellence but experience funding as a barrier to educational opportunities while still in the public school learning environment. Students who are considering advanced academic opportunities have qualified for national academic competitions or have other earned scholastic opportunities will be eligible for support from this fund. We are honored to have supported several students this year participating in a wide range of programs and have just awarded our fourth set of early college scholarships through this fund. Scholarships this year totaled sixteen thousand, just under seven hundred dollars, for a total of thirty-seven thousand dollars in scholarships since the inception of this program. And to highlight two of the awards this year, one went-- one of our students got into the very prestigious Quest Bridge Program, which is a program to help first-generation low-income students, prepare them for college entry. And it's-- I guess it's a program out of San Francisco, and it's hosted at colleges around the area. And the closest to Lynchburg was Yale, from what I understand, and so there are expenses. Although the program is free, the transportation to it is not, so we were able to step in and provide the transportation, hotel, and meals for that student while at Yale. And we also were able, just as an example, to close the gap. We had a student who earned a spot in the FCC LA, the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America National Competition for her culinary arts accomplishments, and LCS stepped in and covered really the bulk of those, and so it was an LCS program. But there were still some things that couldn't be covered by LCS, and we were able to provide those resources, so she was able to compete full-on with everything that she needed and not be at a disadvantage. The Foundation continues to work as advocates for the Lynchburg City Schools as we partnered with LCS to fund a full-page ad in the News in Advance, the Sunday Before Graduation, spotlighting our top graduates where they will be attending school, as well as what they like best about LCS. We also funded ads throughout the year in the Academy of Medicine Newsletter, as well as ads and other publications. In addition, and I should qualify that that would be the Lynchburg Academy of Medicine Newsletter. In addition, Kevin Smith from Genworth was joined by Joel Birch of BWX Technologies and Bob Chapman from Bank of the James, who spoke before city council in support of the division's request for funding. We helped build camaraderie and team spirit by purchasing the T-shirts for the LCS participants of the Ten Miler, which gave LCS and the Ed Foundation a little extra visibility at both this event as well as Get Downtown. In addition to the above-mentioned scheduled events and programs, the Foundation stands ready to assist the school division however we can when needed. And sometimes, and for the first year really, this time, this year, we went beyond LCS, and we sent twenty-six backpacks to the Amherst Education-- and we sent 26 backpacks to the Amherst Education Foundation after the tornado to help those students who lost their homes try to rebuild and get ready for school again. And also coordinated some local community support for some of our LCS families who had challenges getting back on their feet. We also served as the fiscal agent for the J. Reeves Childs Historic Marker. Mr. Childs was a diplomat, ambassador, author, codebreaker, and authority on Giacomo Casanova. In addition, he helped 1,200 Hungarian Jews obtain entry visas for Spanish Morocco to escape the Holocaust. What does this have to do with LCS, you might ask? Well, his biography is diverse and fascinating, and yes, he got his start as an LCS student where his mother was also a teacher. We are honored to be part of the Historic Marker project to honor Mr. Childs' legacy. We were thrilled to be able to provide ISO and CE-rated eclipse glasses for the August 21st, 2017 eclipse to all LCS students, faculty, and staff. We also coordinated and planned the June 13th Business Meet and Greet for our new superintendent, which was very well attended by many business representatives. Thank you to the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance for hosting this event, as well as the Economic Development Authority of the City of Lynchburg and Partners in Education for helping to sponsor this event and making strong ties between LCS and our businesses. We continue to work closely with the School Division to advance the LCS mission. We also work with Partners in Ed, Education, Beacon of Hope, and the Department of Economic Development and other organizations to maximize effectiveness and assistance to Lynchburg City Schools. The Education Foundation continues to grow all of our programs, and we also are growing as an organization. We now have not only my name for contact information, but I'm proud to share with you that Tracy Baker, that volunteer, who I speak of each year when I come before you to speak about how much she volunteers for us, is now on staff for eight hours a week to help us get through what has to get done in the office as well. So we are grateful for her interest and commitment to that. We are working on the final details of a wonderful opportunity for LCS and are looking forward to sharing that information, don't worry, in a much more condensed format with you at the August Board Meeting. We thank you, the School Board and the Lynchburg City Schools, for the outstanding working relationship they offer. Thank you for all that you do for the students of Lynchburg and for allowing the Education Foundation to be part of your team. Is there any questions?
Questions or comments? Go ahead.
Well, I'll just be brief. Jody, I just, every one of these events, I think I was able to attend. The amount of effort and energy and preparation to every single solitary event that you all do. If you took five hours, it would be worth it. And the quality of the impact on people and how you are bringing inclusivity into just about everything that you do, I just want to thank you. And whatever professional development we're doing, Dr. Edwards, sometimes we might want to ask Jody to come in and help people to know how to put it together.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all the good work you're doing, and I wanted to point out to the Board, your outgoing chair, Dr. Sally Seldon. And all this work was, so want to acknowledge her hard work in working through the Board and not undermining you, but Dr. Seldon was a key player. Thank you for all the good work you're doing.
Thank you. Dr. Brennan?
Just to thank you and your staff and your Board, you've done such a great job, and you always, you always keep setting the bar so high. So my only question is, there's no solar eclipse this year, so what is going to be your goal?
Good question. I'll tell you in August.
Ms. Carter?
Just as Dr. Coleman said, I was able to participate in a lot of the activities also, and I'm just always amazed at the classroom innovative grants and how it shows the creativity of the teachers and also how age the students, and it's just wonderful. And the fact that you all went and helped the Amherst students, that's just amazing. So wonderful job.
Ms. Mason?
I would just want to echo what everyone else is saying, and thank you for your hard work and your efforts. In a School Division where our funds are so tight, it's really a blessing to our school, our teachers, you know, to have your resources and to the children who may otherwise go without, so thank you.
Dr. Semai?
Finally, just echoing what everybody said, it was really nice when we were in the process of hiring our new superintendent to be able to say that we have strong community support. I hope that was a big selling point. It would be for me if I were stepping into the job, and that's all because, or a lot because of the work that you all do. And so very grateful that you are that channel that keeps our community involved in supporting our school, so thank you very much.
Dr. Nillis?
Yeah, thank you. Couple of years of a little more close working with you, and it's the amount of work you do throughout the year is fantastic. You're very well organized and, you know, might have an opening, I think, maybe, if you're... We'll talk later. No, you touch the, you know, the honors, the honors dinner for the graduates and then, you know, the resources for teachers and students that need the help. And I mean, you cover the whole spectrum. So thank you for me, and I know from the Board, and it's just, it's amazing to, you know, have a resource like this in Lynchburg, so thank you.
Thank you. And I want to tell a story that I went and, I was invited as a special guest into a kindergarten class at Lincoln Elementary School, where the students sat with me at their table and they read their books that they had written because of a grant. And the enthusiasm and the light on their faces just brought it all home. It's for the kids. And that teacher could not have been more grateful to have those resources that she would not have had. And so thank you so much, just not for that experience, but it was very personal for me, but for all of those experiences that we see in classrooms every day. Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't know if you had a chance, if she shared with you, but that teacher also for that project took some resources from the Tools for Schools warehouse. So she took some of those marble composition books. She bandsaws them in halves or in thirds so that she can really stretch her dollar, because she knows the kids are only going to use that much of a page. So it's amazing what, they always talk about how teachers stretch a dollar. They truly do, even when you are handing them something, they still stretch it.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to the meeting in August?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the finance report from... Dr. Edwards?
Turn it over to Mr. Beckles.
Good evening. We have before you the financial statements for the 11 months ended in May 31st, 2018. We are almost there. From a revenue perspective, we are going to, well, yeah, we are, and at this point have made all of our revenue goals and budgets, and based on what we have so far in July, based on June, we will have made all of our revenue budget. So there's no revenue shortfall perspective, all our sales tax and state revenue and city revenue will come in as budgeted. On the expense side, no unusual items, I would want to draw your attention to the note that we have on the bottom of the summary page that, as you know, where we switch over to a new accounting system in May, and as a result of that switch, we are unable to present the split between the encumbrance payroll. We normally would split the encumbrance away from the available balance. You'll notice on your report it has a zero. It's a zero because we couldn't determine what that amount was. It's there in the available balance, but we normally split that and put the encumbrance. So I just want to draw your attention, we were just unable to do that. I'm not afraid or worried about it because the money was there in the available balance to cover it. So I just wanted to bring your attention, that's not an error, it's just one of those functional things when you switch over to a new system. It can pick it up in the middle of the year, but it will be back on trackers beginning July 1. You'll also notice there's a negative balance in the technology, in the instructional support other of 34,000. That's due to paying for 18, 19 expense in 1718. We will reverse that to be a prepaid, so that overbudget will go away. We try to catch it all the time, but sometimes you can't avoid paying, particularly like some of the maintenance fees and stuff that are due July 1, you kind of have to pay that in the old year. But for accounting purposes, that's going to be a prepaid because it's the next year expense, so that's what caused that over there. From a budget perspective, once we make the correction in June, that'll go away. As far as medical claims, our report came pretty good for June, so we'll be right pretty much, just a little over budget, but nothing to talk about, be able to cover that. But our expenses right now are on the decline, so that's good. As you know, there's been bunks around the whole year, but it's beginning to come down. So I don't see any particular problem with us meeting medical claims budget for the rest of the year. I am projecting at this point we're going to have a fund balance. By the end of the week, I'll be able to firm up exactly what our estimate is going to be. I just want to remind you, as we begin to look at what we can do with the fund balance, one of the recommendations we can have is to restore the money to the health reserve that we took out a year ago, or this past year, to put that back. So as we move forward, we don't have to be worried about the ups and downs of the expense claim as we were this year, because we would have a reserve or the city. So that's one of the other things we'll firm up for you in my report next month, and then we finalize the numbers for June. Other than that, there are no significant items I need to bring to the Board's attention from a financial information perspective or the budget. If you have any questions, I'll entertain those questions at this time.
Do you have a contingency fund to cover expenses over your revenues, like you had here, or a million and a half? Any day fund would be called in a day-to-day?
No, so the only rating day fund is the health reserve that we keep. Other than that, there's no contingency in our budget for anything that goes wrong. Other than, we have a maintenance contingency of 200,000, and we have a snow day, well, a snow contingency of 25,000. Other than those two, those three reserves or contingencies, there are no contingencies in our budget.
So for health, we don't have a stop-loss insurance? We do?
We do have a stop-loss insurance. Stop-loss at 300,000.
300,000.
So any expense greater than 300,000, the stop-loss kicks in. So we only, we only committed for the first 300,000.
So what's our loss ratio right now?
Well, we are fully self-funded. Right now, our expense looking, it's around 11 million dollars. We have to true that up because of the July expenses that I threw about, but right now we spent about 11 million on the medical claims so far for the year. But a contingency is one of those things that we have been, I've been advocating for, but if stuff go, stuff blow up, so to speak, we have to cut back on what we wanted to budget for and spend it for that. Yeah, lack of a contingency does bring operational challenges.
Additional questions? Dr. Coleman?
Yes, the rollout for the bonuses that is going to go okay?
Yes, the bonuses are in the, well, I can address that when we hit the budget and the, we put it on an agenda, but as of now, yes, everything is on track for the bonuses. Like I said, elaborate a little bit more when we get to the budget.
Any other questions?
I had one question regarding the regional tuition. The statement of revenue, it looks at we are at 37.84%. Is that low for this time of the year?
It always trues up at June.
Okay.
So I wouldn't worry about it at this point.
Okay. Looking for money.
I'm looking for every dime we have.
We know that you are. All right, this superintendent recommends that the School Board receive this agenda report as an informational item, so there is no vote for this one. Yes, sir.
Over 300,000 in the premium? No.
We had one for the year, which went over by 9,309,000. We already got the 9,000, so there was no one claim exceeding 300,000.
Have we explored the option of increasing that to maybe 500 and save some on the premium?
We did a couple of years ago. The way the claims, yes, what we calculated was that the savings on the premium didn't outweigh the potential risk of the increased claims. So, yeah, we did look at it. Every year when we come for renewal, we look at that, is this the year to do it? The last two years have not been good to try that. The previous four has been very good for, and that's why we did it. But we do look at that.
Any further questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Beckles.
We are now moving on to the Consent Agenda, which includes a lot of things. Includes the School Board meeting minutes of May 22nd, a closed meeting, June 5th, a regular meeting, June 27th, a special meeting, the personnel report, which we amended, the School Board Regulation, JHCD-RY Administration of Medication, Policy BD/DC Agenda Preparation and Dissemination, Policy EB, School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan, Policy JECJZ, Non-Resident Employee Student Tuition Waiver and Regulations, JNZR, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges, Policy JFHA, Jeff, JH, JFHA-F, and GBA, and GBAF, Prohibition Against Harassment and Retaliation, and Policy JB, Equal Education Opportunities, Non-Discrimination, Policy JED, Student Absences, Excuses, Dismissals and Regulations, JEDRZ, Student Absences, Excuses, and Dismissals. We have a motion to approve, and second, the Consent Agenda. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And at this point, we have a present, a special announcement from our superintendent.
Thank you, thank you. Also, on the Consent Agenda, it gives me great pleasure to announce the new principal for TC Miller, which is going to be Mr. Jeff Guerin, who is currently the Assistant Principal at Perry Mount, and we are very excited to have Mr. Guerin join us as the principal of TC Miller, looking forward to all of his work there with the staff and continuing some of the wonderful things that they've been doing in STEM and working with the teachers there. So I hope everyone join me in congratulating Mr. Guerin and welcome aboard as we move forward to the new school year. He's not here, but he's going to watch this on TV and see. Thank you.
You're welcome. That moves us to the School Board Committee Report section of the agenda. Do we have any School Board Committee reports? I'm not sure anyone's had any meetings in the last quarter, other than the superintendent. Any advisory committees to the School Board?
Sure, I actually do. CTE and Special Ed did not meet, Health Advisory did not meet, although I did get a wonderful email from some of our Health Advisory Committee members with some important information that's going to help us as we look at our family life curriculum. So I'm glad that they are working with us to continue to do that work. The committee that actually did meet, Ethel and I met with the Equity Task Force on June 28th, I believe was the date, and we had a very wonderful, productive meeting. As you know, we are in the process of developing our Equity Habits Concept Map, which talks about all of the things that we're going to do as students, staff, employees, community members, the lens through which we look at equity in our daily work. And we have our draft map, I should say, and they gave me some suggestions for adding. It was a great meeting to add some concepts to our map. Liz was there with us for the News in Advance, which was wonderful. So we actually have to schedule another meeting because we did not finish all of our work with the map. What I will do is just pass this around so that the Board can kind of see where the Equity Committee is going. The other part of our homework, and they did do their homework, I'm so proud of them, we were actually looking at the policy for advisory committees to the Board, and we hope to in the upcoming months to have some suggestions. hope to in the upcoming months to have some suggestions, once we get our policy committees together, about making our advisory committee policies or participation more equitable. And we will be looking to make public announcements about soliciting members and keeping the community informed about the work that the Equity Task Force is doing, School Health Advisory Committee, Special Education Committee, Willis is back there, he does a lot of wonderful things there, and the CTE Committee as well. Interestingly enough, the Equity Committee, our Equity Task Force met at night, but during the day, Ethel and I have been real busy, along with Latonya and Dr. Coleman, thank you for joining us, we did meet with members from Virginia Organizing, and a lot of the things that we talked about, that you might have heard from them tonight, and I'm so sad that they left the meeting already, but a lot of the things that they talked about in terms of discipline, looking at the discipline data, and in terms of our practice, and I could just see Ms. Brown holding a smile when she heard restorative justice, because I know she has training in that, and we have talked about piloting those types of things. All of the things that we heard tonight from the community members, and many of them I met with Mr. Stomp, Mr. Vicente was also with us, Mr. Chandler Reason Chandler was with us. So it was great to have that feedback once again, and we did also invite them to be a part of the Equity Task Force, because that is the work that we're doing, we're looking at our discipline data. We met as the promised team to talk about some of the things, and we do want to be more vocal, more transparent, and if I tell you all the wonderful training that Ms. Brown has in store for us, and the fact that in two weeks, we're going to an Equity Conference, and I think you might be joining us, Ms. Neeson, at an Equity Conference. So there's a lot of work that the division is already doing with the help of board members. My staff is absolutely wonderful with what they're doing, a special thank you to Al Coleman, because whatever I need, he just, he gets it done. And even the community, in the last month, besides the Equity Task Force, the School Health Advisory Committee, Virginia Organizing, we met. We also met with representatives from DACA. So within this past month, we've met with a lot of community members to really talk about what's best for our kids and how do we get there. And if you look at our map, our Equity Habits map, we're looking at that through the lens of everything, through the lens of curriculum access, through, I'm looking at Ben, facilities, you know, can our facilities user-friendly through how we hire and staff, retain and recruit and maintain the wonderful staff that we have, and who gets strained? And I will say, plug for the Equity Task Force, because a lot of times when we talk about training, images of teacher professional development comes to mind, and it is really important, the work of Equity is all of our work. So you'll see a little board training on Equity Habits, what do Equity Habits look like for the board, what do they look like for the leadership, the bus drivers who were here, who, you know, when you listen to the scope of the work that she does, it's a wonderful job to be a bus driver, it's hard, because they're all behind you while you're driving. What does her Equity lens look like in day-to-day and the impact that she has on children? So there's a lot more to come from the Equity Task Force, and we do want a little bit more open membership, so that we feel like, one of the things I heard them say is that they don't have any access and there's no voice, and I will say, we weren't lacking for voice that night when we had our meeting. It was plenty of voice and plenty of access, and we do want to encourage that. And I do want to just give a special thank you to Dr. Coleman for joining me, because it can look like the board is not available, and I just called him and he came and joined us and listened to the conversation. But for those of you who are listening, the board is very supportive of the work that we've been doing, and Ethel and Latonya and I have really done a lot in the last couple of months with their support, and I know they're eagerly holding me accountable to getting it done. So it's an exciting time to really take on the challenging work, and it is challenging work that we have to do, but I'm looking forward to the work, and I just want to thank the board for all of your support in doing it, and thank you, Dr. Coleman, for joining me in the meeting with Virginia Organizing, and to the ladies out there and my entire team that's been working with me. We have more work to do, but I certainly appreciate all your hearts, your sweat and your tears that go along with this, and I think together, we're going to do some wonderful things for kids. So that's the update. And with that said, we do have to schedule another meeting for the Equity Task Force, and hopefully next month, I'll be able to come to you with meetings for the other groups for the entire school year for next year.
Thank you so much. Dr. Coleman?
I don't want to belabor the moment, but I'm grateful, I know that Dr. Nillis, having served as chair over the last two years, we labored a lot, I know that Dr. Brennan, et cetera, and to see what's happening is just so encouraging, and to see Latonya and Ethel unified and the team coming together, it is just incredible. And many of the persons who are on the Equity Task Force, who are very critical and are not bashful in being critical, are giving glowing comments about how we're moving forward in that area. And so, Dr. Edwards, that is reflective of you. I think school board member Mason said it so eloquently a few meetings ago, that you have brought Equity back to a place of prominence where it deserves.
Well said, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, unfinished business, item H one, school fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen revised operating budget. Dr. Edwards?
You know, I'm going to punt to Mr. Beckles.
Good evening, again. At the school board, it was your school board, school board meeting? The school board did approve the two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen nineteen operating budget, subject to the governor's final budget, because at that time, the governor's budget had not been approved yet. Subsequent to that, the governor's budget has been approved, and as a result of the final governor's budget, the school system has two hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-four more dollars, basically three hundred thousand more dollars than you, we had in the previous budget. So what we did is we amended our revenue to include an additional three hundred thousand, and with the three hundred thousand, we decided as administration to buy the school buses with that additional three hundred thousand. So we amended the revenue for three hundred thousand, added the three hundred thousand on to the expense side of the budget for M R for school buses. So the budget that you have before you now is the same budget that you originally approved, with the amendment of the two hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars added to it. And so the only two additions is the revenue and the school buses on the expense side. Again, just for information purposes, the budget does include all of the tier-one requests that the board approves. It also includes the one-time bonus of five hundred dollars for full-time employees and two hundred and fifty dollars for part-time employees. Anyone that has their contract dated July one through August the ninth will get, if you're full-time, you get the five hundred, if you're part-time, you get the two fifty, and that will be paid in the payroll being paid on August the fifteenth. We did get a number of requests for employees wanting us to give them their bonus in a separate check. No, we're not going to do that. Two, one of the reasons they request that, they think the bonus check won't be taxed. There's no way of avoiding the tax. And quite frankly, if we do, if we were to give them a separate bonus check, the flat taxes, federal tax is twenty-five percent plus the FICA, so you're looking at thirty-two point six-five percent federal right off the top. I haven't even added state on to that. So if they really want to see their bonus check, it's going to be in their regular pay. So that's the reason why we denied all the requests, we have a separate bonus check, because you're not getting, you're not going to escape the taxes. In fact, you wish you didn't do it that way. So I just wanted to make that clear for the public, plus the school board, because you may have or will get requests, why couldn't we get it a separate check? The tax is going to be significantly higher. It does include the city-level funding of forty-two million twenty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So they were the only changes from the original budget you approved on the fifth to the one that you have now. Everything else remained the same. So we brought back to you the budget now to be approved with the amended revenue from the governor's budget.
Thank you.
I have a question and a comment.
So this five hundred dollar bonus, can they use it as professional development, which will not be taxable, or will it be taxable?
The bonus is going to be taxable, but it's going to be, what would the rule say? You take your annual salary plus your bonus, and then you figure the tax on that total amount. If we were to give a separate check, it's a flat twenty-five percent federal plus the FICA. So it's a greater tax on the separate check than the combined check.
So if you allow people to use it for professional development, like going to a conference, will that be taxable? I don't know, but I'm just saying, is that an option or no? That was not an option?
No. And in order to do what you're asking, then what we'll have to do is a lot, the five hundred M R for everybody's professional development training, which will kind of defeat the purpose of them getting the money, so to speak.
I had a comment if I might please. On page one hundred of the statement, if you look at it, the instructional personal services are down one point nine-two percent. It means we cut personnel cost about nine hundred thousand two hundred and thirteen And the administration personal services were up by twelve point five-four percent, which is about three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. So is there, this is an anomaly, or is it just? Because we are cutting personnel, to me, is like teachers and bus drivers and other things, and administration is at the top, am I correct in assuming?
No, I'm going to clarify that for you now. That's a misconception. When we see administration in this categorization, that does not mean central office. Included in that is school administration also. So if you're looking at, like how you assume that the instruction part is teachers and bus drivers, and administration, that's not the case. So you couldn't derive that conclusion from there. We did add a few different positions in what I call the administration, but it's administration across the district is not administration like this building, or central office position. If you wanted a detail of what exactly, I could provide that for you, so you could get a clarity that it's not a beef-up of central office.
I just want to make sure that people sitting out there don't see we're building up an inverted organization.
Yeah, that is one of the disadvantages of this presentation, and many people have concluded that, oh, administration here means central office, no, administration here doesn't mean central office.
And if I could just add to that, because you weren't on the board when I did the reorg plan, part of what we did with the reorg plan was to kind of streamline the, more of the central administration and beef up the building administration. So if you, and I believe that's, the presentation that I did is online, if you look at that, you can see where we've added some positions, but those people, and actually, none of them are here right now, but those people, they're, one of their primary roles is to work directly with teachers and principals at the building levels, where the instructional piece is happening, rather than having extra people who are just in, and not that we don't work hard in central office, we do, that are in central office. So we're very mindful of that, and I know Marie, I think, is still sitting back there. We talk a lot about our managing of our personnel and looking, going forward with a personnel management plan. There's a lot of conversation that we've had that hasn't, you know, in the last three months, we haven't been able to do everything, and I, just going back to what you said about having goals for what we need to do, we are in constant conversation about our financial goals, and you can see even being mindful about getting the buses, because we did ask council for buses originally when they gave us level funding, but didn't give us the additional funding for buses. And I, you know, I also want to say, and I bug Anthony all the time, we're talking about reinvesting in our staff, and that's my key word, it's our staff reinvestment plan and looking where we can cut costs to say that savings, we can reinvest in our staff. So we have a plan for next year, and we're not sitting where we were sitting this particular year where I came in, where we can do something for our staff, but if, we have to start that work right now. And I'm just going to go publicly, since this is on TV, that's hard work, because anytime you want to take existing funds and reinvest in the people who are here, who are getting the job done, so that we have a nice salary package that we can offer, we can look at the things that were brought to our attention with the bus drivers, the only way we're going to do that, and I'll take part of Katie, is either we cut and save, or we get more revenue from city council, and I'm going to say we do both. I have no problems cutting and saving, and my team is working with me. We did some of that this year, which allowed us to get the bonus, because quite frankly, we didn't have anything for the bonus. So we're capable of doing it, but at some point, you do reach a saturation point where you can't cut and save anymore. But I'm hopeful that the wonderful work that my staff has done over the past couple of years, will send a message to our community that our kids are worth it, that our staff is worth it, and that they too will join us in reinvesting in our staff, and together we'll have a nice plan next year, along with a personnel management plan and the fiscal plans that we've had.
Thanks a lot, and don't take me wrong, what I was saying is our mission is to serve kids. So personally, I'd like to see the top number of personnel instruction in positive, and the administration maybe, doesn't mean administration is not important.
Understood.
But, you know, that shows we are truly committed to our kids.
We, that is all of our mission. We are a customer service-oriented group, who everybody's job should be about kids and families in this division, and it is.
I think it would also help first to provide a definition of what all is included in administration, so you don't leave to draw your own conclusions, you can see this is what makes up administration. That is not just central office, it's raising school administration inclusive of central office. I think that would help going forward to avoid the wrong conclusions.
Thank you. Any other question? Dr. Bren?
Just for one point of clarification, under the, this was a great summary, which I really appreciate, very other points, but the one we have expended your summary, you have the personnel service, the decrease in personnel services cost of nine hundred thousand dollars, and the doctor, but due to staff reduction resulting in reorganization. What were the, I know this may reflect what Dr. Edwards presented to us with her presentation, but what was the, what did that represent, that nine hundred thousand dollars?
That represented some positions out of central office. It represented some other positions. So the net of what came out of what I call instructional category was nine hundred thousand. Now, the other part, I guess to answer your question under the three sixty-nine, as Dr. Edwards said, we moved some of the administrative services to the school. So, yeah, you would see, that's why that went up, because we moved them to be administration helping the schools, as opposed to administration accounted for in central office. So it's a combination of both, reduction in the instructional central office staffing, and then pushing them out to the school area. It's a combination.
Right, thank you.
Dr. Coleman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that gives us three school buses, and we were hoping to do eight.
Eight.
So we still have Dr. Copeland, five more to find at some point down the road.
We have executed orders for two on year-end funds for this year, so if everything goes as it's lined up right now, we'll have five of those eight accounted for.
All right. And I like the staff reinvestment plan, Madam Chair, and maybe that's a good way to look at what school board member Gupta indicated, that we probably are grateful for what has happened, but it appears that Dr. Edwards is moving us in the right direction, that we need to start looking now in terms of what, what we need to do to make what needs to happen. And when we say staff, we're not just talking about teachers, we're talking about bus drivers and everybody.
Staff, totally.
And the bonus, the bonus is to part-time and full-time.
Staff, correct.
Thank you.
Thanks for answering, because in fact, I got an email and a voicemail, because there was a teacher that was saying, since the bonus is for teachers, no, the bonus is for staff, inclusive of teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
What about the twenty-first century? The twenty-first, twenty-first century position? I don't know what they're called, teachers or coordinators?
They're grant-funded.
So they don't receive the?
Oh, you know about on the bonus part?
Yes.
I defer to the finance officer.
On the bonus part, yes, the twenty-first, coordinators.
The individuals that are funded by grants are going to be, their bonus are coming from the grants, and we have some that we call split-funded, which we have, I've already calculated how we're going to do that. So if you're funded a hundred percent from a grant, the grant is going to pay your bonus.
At the same time, excuse me?
At the same time, everybody gets- At the same time, everybody gets paid the same time, the same amount, regardless of what source of funds. I'm glad you brought that point up. There are some grants that are maxed out currently, so they won't be able to pay the bonus. We will have to cover that. So everybody will be paid a bonus, it's just a matter of where you'll be paid from. But nobody's gonna be excluded from the getting a bonus because of funding source.
Start planning for 1920 budget.
Big bad?
When would you start planning for your next year's budget?
Quite frankly, so did we finish implementing this, we already thinking about next year's budget.
The reason I'm saying is, echoing Vice Chairman Coleman's thing, is there any way, we are all, no, we are all committed to giving a decent increase to all the employees of Lynchburg City School System, and planning that in the budget now, and then we work backward from there, instead of looking at the year end, what the leftover is?
We have already had those discussions, and currently have those discussions, even up to today, Dr. Edwards and I were, if we are gonna take, if we're gonna use funds from our current operating budget, we've got to be careful how we're doing that, because one, you're basically, it's almost like the step system, you're almost, you're committed to doing it, period, where you're getting the money from. So if we make the commitment that we're gonna go take this year's savings and do a budget for next year, one, that's contingent you do have savings, and two, you're gonna need a little bit more. So how do you do that, and how do you carry that forward, based on the way we currently account for? So there's some challenge, but we are working on trying to figure that out, how are we gonna do that?
Because you've got $800,000 in the current budget for bonuses.
That's correct.
And 1% is 700 some thousand, so 1% increase is about 700 some thousand.
Correct.
So what we are looking for is another $600,000 savings to make it, let's say, a goal of 2%.
1.4.
Yeah, so total, 800 is all.
You got 800 already, because you have it this year. If your budget carry forward again, you're still gonna have that 800 the year before.
Yes, sir.
So yes, but you have to continue now. By doing that, you're also saying, if you have additional requests, the first thing you have to take out of that 800,000, you can't do additional requests with that 800,000. So it just creates some challenges, we just have to figure out how we get there. But we are working on that now. Like I said, no, no, just today, Dr. Edwards and I were trying to figure out, how do we go about doing this thing?
Those faces out there can tell you that we already started, because as we have a conversation about, I might need more staff, they know that I'm like, oh, no, we're trying to, we're trying to hold it, you know, what we have, and I'm really, you know, I'm very grateful in the work that my team has done, because, you know, Dr. Bruce and team back there sent an assault team over to help, you know, a building principal with, let's look at your schedule, let's look at every possible resource, how can we use different staff across buildings to really keep the personnel costs down? Because close to 80%, if I'm not mistaken, of our expenditures is personnel. So if you really, I mean, we could save all the pencils we want to, but you're not gonna get many teachers with savings. So if you're really looking at managing your budget, you really have to manage personnel, and that's where you have to start to say sometimes, no, we gotta try to make it do with who we have, or maybe reallocate. Now, that being said, we have children, not widgets. So there comes a point where I'm like, I have a kid, I have a class, I have needs, and I can't predict kids' needs, and I'm just gonna look back there at Willis and say, sometimes kids have extreme needs that require multiple adults to help them function. And I think we forget that. We think about a teacher in a classroom with 20 kids, but when you think about some of our more significant, kids with significant disabilities, you know, they require a lot more, and we have to give it to them, we do. So I have to make those decisions as well, that say, I'm trying to hold personnel down, but I understand when I need to do what I need to do in terms of meeting kids' needs. So that's why part two, we're doing our best to tighten our belt, we want to send a message out there that we're trying to reinvest in our staff, and your sandwich might be reduced to half a sandwich, I don't know. However, I can get some pennies out of here, we'll have snacks. But I also want to send a message to the community that, you know, our kids are worth it, they are worth it, they need the best teachers in those classrooms, giving them all that love, and that wraparound service from the teacher to the assistant, to the cafeteria aide, to the person who works in payroll, to make sure that everything goes smoothly for the staff, so you don't have staff who are stressed and worried about taking care of their own families, taking care of our little family. So it is a wraparound service, but we do need the support of the entire community, and we do need council's help with that as we go forward.
Thank you. Any additions, questions or comments? This item is for action tonight. Do I have a recommendation?
Still moving, Madam Chair.
Dr. Coleman, do I have a second? Dr. Senhai? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? Moving on to new business. Good grief. Your first, you're doing great. I read 14 of these, seriously? Moving right along, Lynchburg City School Board Policy Updates. Dr. Edwards?
Okay, this one I'm gonna point to, Dr. Copeland.
Good evening. Welcome, Ms. Morrison. I was so refreshed to feel you going through the J's, D's, E's, and B's.
I will, I will practice that next time and record it.
At some point, they all start running together, but the fortunate thing is the legislature's out of session. The unfortunate thing is the legislature's out of session. And when they're out of session, then the policy updates get larger and larger. So this update flows from V S B A as the May update. A lot of the stuff that you have approved over the couple of previous meetings came out of the February update. There's a large amount of material in this update. It has been reviewed by legal counsel, and we've taken a look at everything from all the angles that we normally consider. Do want to draw your attention to two brand-new policies that don't currently exist in our policy manual. That is the fifth one down, which is GBB, and the sixth one from the bottom, which is IJD. As we see with many of these policy updates from V S B A, they are primarily focused on editorial changes to the wording, and then changes to what might be in the Code of Virginia, and how that might be captured in our policies. So it comes to you tonight for information. One of the policies, I think they update two to three times a year, would be BBFA. That's the first one that deals with conflict of interest and disclosure of economic interest. It's a fairly lengthy policy, and it changes as different things occur across the state. This is one that I did want to draw your attention to, because a lot of it does apply to you as board members specifically. There's not a lot of global changes in that one, but if you haven't read that one recently, I would ask that you take a little time and read that one in detail, due to conflict of interest. I can go through any questions you have on these, and do my best to answer them, or I'll gather the team, and we'll get those answers to you as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Assuming we're signing a conflict of interest agreement as a board member.
I'll defer that one to the board clerk.
Yes, sir, there is actually one in the packet that we have tonight for anyone that it's applicable to. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Brennan?
So, Dr. Copeland, can I say? And this is for information you can provide us at the next meeting, but on the policy that has to do with admission of homeless children, I think it's J E C A, and this is, it's page, on the agenda is page 140. And I particularly want to just ask you to look into, the question was on page 141, which talks about admission of homeless children to the school system regarding their immunization records and regarding physical examination. And again, this is just not for discussion tonight, but just if you get back to us, from the medical point of view, I'd just like to know that there's some term limit on how long they could be in school without immunization records. So this is saying that if they don't have immunization documentation, they will be directed to the homeless liaison. If they need a physical examination, they will be also referred to the homeless liaison, and that they will be admitted immediately to schools, which I think is all very appropriate and all very good, and I think the policy makes a lot of sense. But I just want to see if we can also make sure that children are not in our schools who have not received immunizations for a long period of time, that we either document it or we act on that.
Okay, so I'll go back and look into see what the timeline is, that we allow that to occur, and when we have some hard dates on when we expect to see it.
Thanks so much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, do we have data on homeless children in terms of...
Yes, we do. Ms. Brown? Is that your department?
Yes, it is.
We would want to get with our homeless liaison and get whatever data you need, that's not something that we keep at our fingertips on a regular basis, and we also have to consider the sensitivities of the children involved.
Absolutely, but I am, I am just grateful that we are aware of whomever may be in that category, I don't necessarily need to know, and that Dr. Brennan's point is well taken. That's, that's very interesting.
Ms. Carter?
Are there not other students that are not homeless, that may not do immunization also? Are there not other students that, I mean, do we ask for them to be, to have a time period for, I mean, not all students, is there a form? Aren't there some students that come without the immunization? Or that they've signed up documents that is against their religion or other?
I would want to, I would want to confer with Ms. Bon Gentry on the details of that, and our nurse coordinator. Our nurse coordinator really just started, Anne's on vacation right now, so we can look into what other waivers there might be out there for immunizations and things like that, and get back to you.
Thank you. Ms. Mason, did you have a question?
Well, I guess it was similar to what Ms. Carter, I was gonna say, what do we do with students whose parents are just opposed to immunizations, period?
I believe that's the same instance that Ms. Carter might be referring to.
I had a question on page 130, the college and career readiness. That looks like a lot of new information.
It is, that is one, that is a completely new policy for us.
I was wondering about the impact on instruction and personnel, who's gonna carry this out and document it, and how's it gonna be integrated into what we're already doing?
A lot of this stuff is already being done. Naviance itself had a career interest inventory module within it. From my own children's experience, I know that they've gone through this, we can get back on the details of this, but folks have looked at it, and nobody raised any flags as to any roadblocks or things that we weren't either currently doing or could do. We'll double check.
Great, thank you. This is for information and action at the August meeting. So if you have questions about that, direct them to the superintendent, and she will get it to the appropriate. Okay, moving on to, I can't see, I2, application for federal programs. Dr. Edwards?
Yes, and I'm going to ask April Bruce to come up, and I think she has a presentation. And the purpose of this is just to kind of give the board an overview of our federal programs, where the money comes from, and what we use the funds to do to support our students.
Good evening. Each year, we submit our application for federal programs upon board approval. And tonight, I'm just going to give you a little bit of information on the federal programs that we are currently working on, and would like to pretty quickly submit our applications for. One of our largest one is Title I, many of you all have heard about that. The purpose of Title I is to provide all children a significant opportunity to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education. And under the Every Student Succeeds Act, known as ESSA, school divisions must use their Title I funds to improve academic achievement in math, reading, and language arts, and Our anticipated amount that we are expecting for this year is listed there at about $3.6 million. That is a 10% reduction, we did get notified of that reduction May 2nd. They tell us to plan each year for level funding unless they tell us otherwise. Well, they told us otherwise, so we are expecting a 10% reduction, and we're just not exactly sure what it's gonna look like, because the actual allocations don't come up out until early September. Last year, I believe it was around September 8th. So we'll know a little bit more in the fall exactly how much we're going to be getting. Just so you'll know, some of the kinds of things we spend the money on, Title I Part A, some of the things listed there, you'll see our homeless liaison, our elementary instructional coaches, 0.80 of their salary comes out of that particular title grant. We've got the Title I teachers that are Title I schools, all of their salaries and the instructional assistance to support students in the schools also comes out of that. You'll see various supplemental positions based on needs at specific schools, and you'll see school level before those that are being spent out of school, allocated Title I money, stipends for teachers for data analysis, lesson planning, curriculum development, and some of the other things that they do in the schools. Some of the other things out of Title I would be, we're required actually to set aside some money in a couple categories. One would be neglected and delinquent, set-aside funds, indirect costs, we have to set those aside. We also have an opportunity for professional development software. We have recently added field trips to help offset costs of those field trips for some of our students in poverty, so that they'll be able to experience some of the learning opportunities and experiential learning opportunities. So we put that in a couple years ago. We've got parental and family engagement also at the school level, they are required to have events at the school dealing with parent and family engagement. Another grant that we have an application for would be Title II, and that one is preparing, training, and recruiting high-quality teachers and principals. And that particular fund supports programs in three areas. That would be increasing the number of qualified teachers, increasing the number of qualified principals and assistant principals, and increasing the effectiveness of teachers and principals. Our anticipated allocation is $517,000, and a little bit of change there, and that's based on level funding. We should know more again in the fall to see exactly how much we get. Some of the things that we spend Title II money on currently are the elementary science program, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, P B I S, our elementary instructional coaches, our school-level stipends for work outside of contract time, so we may bring a group of teachers together for professional development on a Saturday or after school, and we typically will give them a stipend for coming in off-contract time to get that professional development. Other ways we use Title II, professional development, again, that training for our staff, indirect costs, we do set aside that, and then equitable participation of private schools. These title grants, we have to allocate money to our private schools as well. So we bring all the private schools to the table, we ask their needs, and we allocate money to them based on a per-pupil expenditure that we're required to do. Title III, Title III is for our English learners, and basically, that's used for effective approaches and methodologies for teaching English learners. The goal is basically to help English learners attain English proficiency, so they may access the academic curriculum to gain knowledge and skills to meet our state standards. We only get $24,000 in Title III. We have about 240 EL students that are identified and receiving services for us right now. That $24,000 is based on level funding from last year. We're hoping to get a little more, because we are increasing in our number some. Some of the ways we're using that would be professional development, again, our indirect costs, we are using some supplemental software with students, Rosetta Stone we're using with some of our students. with some of our students to teach English. We are, of course, giving instructional supplies. Again, the private school money. We are also allocating some money to private schools. And then some of you all have actually attended our culture night that we have each spring. And we fund that out of this grant as well. And tonight, we're requesting your approval to submit federal applications for Title I Part A, Title II, and Part, Part A, and Title III. And applications for Title I Part D, which is our neglected and delinquent part of the Title I grant, and Title IV will be coming up real soon, hopefully at the next board meeting in August. And we'll be glad to provide you with those updates as we get those dollar amounts in, in early September to let you know, did we get an increase, a decrease, and, and how we look as far as that, that funding source. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Dr. Coleman?
Dr. Bruce, congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
And I, just curious, do we ever have to send any money back that we don't use?
We, we do a really good job trying to spend down our money.
Very good.
We are very cautious because just like this year, when we did get that 10% decrease, we kind of stopped spending a little while just to make sure that we had enough to cover any positions that may currently be in place. We can cover those with carryover funds. We don't like to do that. But we, since the late notification of the cuts or the funding sources are, they're just very late, we can use carryover funds. We've got 27 months to spend the money. So we're just, we're pretty cautious. But no, we don't send any back if we can help it.
Any other questions or comments? I have two. I am, I'm sure, it's a statement. I'm sure it's going to go up. It's just, it's going to happen. But do we cover any of the expenses associated with the personnel from local money? Do we match? Do we pay for benefits or for the people that are employed by these grants?
No, anybody employed by a grant, the full cost of that individual is in the grant, unless we split fund them. For example, if we have a position that we split fund 50/50, 50% is in the grant, 50% is in operating, then we split it 50/50. But wherever you're funded from, the total cost goes to that grant.
Okay.
I would just like to point out one other item on the grants. Whenever we have a budget reduction in the grant money, now we have a decision point. Because those people that are funded in that grant, what do we do with them? Do you move them over to operating? So we have, we have to think about that because they aren't really in our budget.
Right.
So we already approved the budget for 18, 19. So if those reductions materialize, now we have a decision point. Do they go away? Or do we bring them over, make amendments and make provisions in the operating? Once, if, let's assume we do that, now we've dipped into that part of money that we're supposed to reinvest. So you see how all of this stuff ties together. There are hard decisions either way you go. And since 85% of our budget is personnel, unfortunately, any decision that you make of a magnitude is going to affect personnel. I just want to bring the board aware that some of the intricacies of not understanding how sometimes they work, that at the end of the day, it still boils down to money and people. And sometimes you can't have both.
Okay, thank you. This is for action? No, it was for action tonight. So, motion?
I'd like to approve the applications for federal funding.
Second? We have action and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. All right. Oh goodness, another school board policy update.
This one's all about JD, JDB, and AGD.
Woo-hoo.
So when policy updates come out of the SBA, sometimes we pull them out due to the important details that are covered. This one will be near and dear to all of your hearts because it deals with long-term suspensions and you all sit on all those long-term suspension reviews. So the legislature made some significant changes. They changed the definition of long-term suspension from 365 calendar days to 11 to 45 days. They also added specific language on page 152 related to suspensions for preschool through third-grade students. And besides the other, where they made TENS, T E Ns, and 10 the number, they clarified all the other 11 to 45-day periods. And then the other significant change is on the la, is on page 154, which gets to the, to the details of a 45-day suspension can be a longer than 45-day suspension if the act committed reaches a certain level. And those are primarily drugs, serious injury, and other things like that. What you're looking at here is the change to the code reflected in the policy. And we take this policy verbatim from the Virginia School Board Association version. What is being worked on, and there's actually a meeting tomorrow, is the regulation side of this, which will be coming to you at a future meeting. So this is the, this is the legal code and policy update portion of it. And we've got Latonya here if we need to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Dr. Nellis?
No, this is for, for Latonya. You know, with the new changes and the exceptions for long-term suspension beyond 45 days, is that, is that clear in your mind at this point?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good.
So that's why we're meeting tomorrow to go over the regulations. So how are we going to implement the policy update?
Right, because this is all going to come down to the regulation and, and the practice
Yes.
Of, yeah, yeah, okay.
And we're pretty close to it, what we've been doing already. So I'm very comfortable and confident.
Yeah, that, that would have been my opinion too, that we basically meet, had been meeting the intent and spirit of this anyway.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Coleman?
Dr. Edwards, with the recs, your flavor and spin is going to be put on it, correct?
Yes.
Very good.
Other questions, comments? I guess this is pretty important because these meetings start pretty soon.
Yes.
Yes. But I do, I agree with Dr. Nellis. I think that we are pretty close to doing what the intent is because of our policy about providing education and placements.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Dr. Coleman?
Yes, it's not policy related. Discuss it later. You know, all of the layers that are deeper to what is needed to make what you do work, you know, at some point, we constantly want to kind of understand that.
Okay.
It's deep.
Might be a work session. Or two. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Brown.
I four, oh, Dr. Edwards?
I four, oh, Mr. Beckel.
This one should be easy. In the concern that January passed, the regulation corresponding to this, the only change we make is on the, on page 150, 167. We changed the tuition and fees to read tuition rates and additional charges contained in Regulation JNZR, just to make it all consistent with the policy, the regulation we just saw. That's the only change that is necessary in the policy that correspond to the regulations we just approved earlier.
Page 165, second paragraph, foreign students in an F1 immigration status can be permitted for a period of 12 months. Page 165, second paragraph, the top from the top. Is that, could that be extended beyond 12 months? Or it is 12 months is the ultimate? Is that a school board policy or a state policy? Page 165.
I know it's part of our policy now.
I would want to double check.
Whether this is tied to State Department policy or not. We've had, only had a few students that I'm aware of here on an F1 visa. So let us check into whether it might be renewable. So if you come as a sophomore, you can continue to renew it, given that you meet all the State Department rules and regulations. But we'll check on it and give back to you.
So assuming we have a Department of Homeland Security approval to issue I20s for F1 visa?
I do not believe that the school division gets involved in any way in the visa process.
No, for them to obtain. Otherwise, they cannot come in the school division schools.
We will have to check into this. We went, we went into this a couple of years ago. And people were thinking, we granted the visa status and...
It's more intense. So let us do some background research for you.
Any questions about this that we didn't get tonight that you think about later, just direct them to Dr. Edwards? It's for action on August 7. Item I five, Freedom of Information Act Officer?
Yes, that is me. And that is for action tonight. And we need to annually appoint our FOIA officer. And on the agenda is to appoint Ms. Spinner as the FOIA officer.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion for approval?
I'd make a motion to appoint Ms. Spinner as the Freedom of Information Act Officer.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Thank you. All right. This leads us to superintendent's comments.
Sure. And I'll try to go pretty quickly and through my list here, just in my travels since school's been out. We had a great SRO slash administrator training together, which Nora helped us with. And it was great information for our partnership in terms of how SROs and administrators work together to keep our kids safe. So very thankful for that. I did get to go to the STEM Academy meeting, partnership meeting, and took a tour of our STEM Academy or which, at CVC, C, which was great to be able to be in that facility and want to go back to high school and do those kinds of things myself. Lots of opportunity to celebrate our kids. I went to the Alpha Phi Alpha Scholarship Awards for our young men and was very proud of, oh my goodness, all of their achievements and accomplishments there. Felt like a mom, even though none of them were mine, but I felt that way. I got to visit the YMCA Power Scholars Academy at RS Payne and see children there already. Somebody had asked about the career parts of it. Those kids were already talking about their career path and they were little itty-bitty ones. And I got to play with the robot, the, the robots, yes, in, in the library there. I did not get to attend. I was jealous. I was stuck at a meeting. But I know Dr. Copeland and Cindy Bab attended the Summer Market Day at Perrymont, which looked like fun. And again, talk about our kids being entrepreneurs and selling and marketing and things like that. So another wonderful opportunity for students in the summer. This past weekend, I went to Diamond Hill Baptist Church and just celebrated the youth there. They had a youth celebration, recognition. And they did staff and students there. And, you know, any opportunity that I could be there to encourage our youth is a well-spent afternoon. Plus, they fed me. So thank you, Diamond Hill. That was very nice. And then I left that. And shortly after, went to Mary Jane Dolan's house to celebrate Joan Foster's 16 years as mayor. So and a couple of folks were there, very well-attended. Just a nice atmosphere to celebrate the accomplishments she's had, she's done for our city. And then this morning, I almost didn't come back to work because, right, Denise? I was having a good time at Heritage High School with students and staff over there for the summer school programs. And I got to see all the programs that were, were going on and meet the fabulous staff. And I have to say, it's nice to just be able to talk to staff. And the people who are here in the summer working with our staff are committed. They are holding it down for our kids and some wonderful people. We were talking about lots of ideas going forward. So that really started my day off on, on a high note. And then I realized it was very late. So I needed to get back to the office. A couple of things that are coming up, registration day at Bass is on Thursday, July 12. So I will be there to check out our families as they register our students for Bass. For the rest of the division, it is on Thursday, August 9. We have our back-to-school celebration on Saturday, August 4. So come out and join us with that. Kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, and sixth grade orientation at Bass is on Tuesday, July 17. And the other schools are on Tuesday, August 14. And then we have ninth grade orientation at EC Glass on Wednesday, August 8. And at Heritage on Thursday, August 9. So we are very busy during the, the summer here. And as I mentioned earlier, we also have the conference that we are going to in a couple of weeks. And if you're on Twitter, you'll see my staff, my principals have been to multiple conferences this summer. There are teachers who have been, I don't even think they left. They were here, working on curriculum and doing a whole bunch of work. It does not slow down in the summer, contrary to the belief that people say, oh, you have the summer off, you don't do anything. Lots going on during the summer. I'm so excited to hear about the wonderful things that my principals and staff have experienced, that they're going to bring back into the schools. So we can have a lot of energy with that. Also had a couple of meetings about some of our supporters. I talked a little bit earlier about some of the people I met with Virginia organizing. But I also met with some fine gentlemen for the Men to School program that we are looking to have our men once again greet, meet and greet our students as they start the school year. And it's always a positive way to start the school year. So we are really, and I do want to thank Ethel in her new transition role, where she's just going to be everywhere and all, every, all the places, in terms of that community engagement part and really finding these opportunities for where we have people who are eager to help us, work with us, and being a mentor and being just a friendly face and welcoming, clap, clap them into school. We want schools where kids are running in, that they, they love it so much. So the more support that we have, the better. And I have a couple other engagements on my schedule coming up with more community groups. I'm thankful for working with the Ed Foundation. And Ethel is going to be taking over partners in edu, she already did it, taking over partners in education. So we have a lot of community support. And yes, Kim, that was a selling point to, to get me down here in terms of looking at the dynamics of the community and knowing that we, we have all of that. So looking forward to that and more too.
Just don't think you're doing enough. Board comments? Dr. Nellis?
Well, welcome to Ms. Evans and Dr. Gupta. You know, this is trial by fire on the first... You got, you got, you got both barrels tonight. So looking forward to working with you. And you know, I hope you're looking forward to working with us too. Long tenure, please come back. But you know, we try to, I hope, I hope we're open with each other. And if you have questions, feel free to call anybody. I mean, you can call the board chair. I'll volunteer for that, so.
I'm happy to accept any calls.
But seriously, if any questions, sure.
Ms. Mason?
I knew I should have gone first. But, you know, listening throughout the meeting, the energy around the table is very different. And it's, it's inspiring. First of all, I want to say thank you to Dr. Nellis for his services, board chair, the last two years. You make my transition a lot easier. And I'm, I'm very grateful for that. I mean, everyone recognizes that this is a volunteer position, but the chair has to go above and beyond. And, and we would be remiss not to recognize all the hard effort that you put in. So thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Morrison, Dr. Coleman, and to our new leadership. And also welcoming Dr. Gupta and Ms. Evans. I'm looking forward to a great year with all of you. I think we've got some great things on the horizon.
Additional comments? Yes, Dr. Brennan?
Just wanted to reiterate that I also had the opportunity to go to the RS Payne Power Scholars Academy, which was really a great partnership with the YMCA. And also the, the session at Perrymont, the market day. I forgot my piggy bank that I got there. I wanted to show it to the board. But that was also so much fun and so well-done. I want to welcome Dr. Gupta and Mrs. Evans to the board. I want to welcome Dr. Gupta and Mrs. Evans to the board. And I want to thank Dr. Edwards and Denise who are working on the new orientation schedule for the, for the new members. I think that will be a great help, thank you so much for it, I know it's on the schedule. And I also want to thank Dr. Nellis so much for his leadership for the last two years and what he's done to help all of us, particularly the newer members of the board, be part of the board. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Ms. Carter?
Well, I'm just humbled and appreciative to have, to be appointed for another three years, so grateful for that. And also for the new board members, welcome. And for Dr. Nellis for all this hard work and heartburn. And also, we're just looking for great things to be that progressive school board, to be the, I forgot the term.
High performance.
And that's what I'm doing in my presentation, but I know where that, yeah, for being the high performance, that's what we want to aim for.
That's what we are. Dr. Coleman?
Yes, sir, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to acknowledge that tomorrow, because you asked, I will be going to the Legislative Committee meeting for the SBA. And of course, as we move along, there may be times, and I know Dr. Copeland has suggested in the past, we have, I believe, but we ought to be having recommendations also for that committee to, to look at. And of course, we're looking forward to July the 16th and the 17th for those who are going, new, new school board members, Evans and Gupta, again, joining others with welcoming you. And on the 17th is the conference on Ed that will take place in Richmond, we're excited about that. I also would like to acknowledge that we have until July the 13th, if there are any presentations that we want to recommend to take place in November, the 14th through the 16th. We've got some great staff members here. Our staff persons have done things in the past, so that would not be new. But we've got a great superintendent, deputy, directors, and all of that. So we ought to be thinking about some presentations that we'd like to see happen in Williamsburg and, and as well as some of the awards. I would like to tell Dr. Nellis, thank you, sir, for leading us through. Many chairs do not get the opportunity to lead a board through the selection of a superintendent. And... And from the bottom.
It turned out really good.
But we thank you, sir, that was a lot, and we really appreciate your leadership. And I can't tell you how happy I am and looking forward to you, Susan Morrison, leading us as chair. You have mine, all of our full support. I would share in Dr. Edwards' sentiments to Mayor Foster, who really put out their Poverty to Progress initiative and the new leadership on that side. Looking forward to working together with them and, and our chair. I guess the last thing I want to say is that we mentioned Men to School, and that's going to be exciting. Dr. Edwards mentioned that. But I don't want you to forget that Shalita Mason was out there with us last year. So the ladies are welcome as well.
Thank you, because I was going to say that. I was not going to let that go. Yes, Ms. Carter?
And I know they have a video opportunity at the...
Williamsburg.
Williamsburg for a video competition. I would sure would like for the overcoming adversity with diversity.
That would be powerful.
To submit one or both of those videos, yes. I know Manon Shaw said that he and some of the other students would be willing to do that.
We need to do that.
So we can reach out to them. Yeah, that would be awesome.
Dr. Gupta?
I thank all of you for mentioning. Training for last few weeks, you know, that I really appreciate all you have done. I missed your being chair, but I look forward to you being chair. And Ms. Morris, I watched you on TV, you're a great leader, I know you'll do an excellent job. And I'm so excited. We got a new board chair, we got a new superintendent, and we got a new mayor in City of Lynchburg. So energy is there, let's push forward with some exciting items to make this place much better for our kids and our for our employees.
I thank you that for your support, and I too want to welcome you. And I assure you though, by the next board meeting, you'll have it all under hand. You will, you will know exactly what to ask. But I'm going to go a different route with Mike, I'm going to thank his wife. Because it...
Yes, thank you, Ann, really.
It takes a lot of time to do what you did, and, and I want to thank your family for sharing you with us. And I promise to make the same commitment, and I'm sure my family would be supportive of me as well. We, our next board meeting is 24th of July. And so if no further business, we're adjourned.